Veronica, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Weidling?
Here.
Mr. Ratliff?
Here.
Mrs. Dyer?
Here.
Mr. McKinnis?
Here.
Mrs. McKay?
Here. All right, at this time we'll entertain motions for Vice President. I would like to nominate Ted McKinnis. Do I have a second?
My second.
All right, any other nominations? All right. Discussion, call the roll. She's getting there.
Well, I tried to make it so that you could see it better in the book, and that's not going to work. Mrs. McKay?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried. All right, Superintendent's report, and congratulations Ted, how many times have you done this?
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to Superintendent's report on the task force update.
Thank you, Kelly, I just have two items, I know Veronica's going to present her five-year forecast, so a couple of items that I wanted to bring before the board, just kind of an update on where we're at with our task force discussions. We did meet with some community folks not too long ago to talk about different, maybe motivation for some of our families to get involved, you know, with some of the counseling services, and we had our family courts there, the prosecutor's office, law enforcement, and some of our folks there as well. And then so, based on the conversation we had as a board, Kelly and I met and we came up with two possible task force formats, if you will. Probably looking at sometime in June to get this together, whether it's, whatever format we decide, whether it be a special board meeting, if we did want to hold the task force meeting at an open board meeting, or if we want to allow board members to appoint community people to a committee, more or less an advisory committee that would put together, we'd report back to the entire board at that point. I think it was brought up by Mr. Ratliff as a possibility of two board members attending the actual meetings, and the other board members that were not in attendance would appoint two to three community people to be a part of that. Obviously, we would have representatives from both associations, the MEA and OPC, along with some of the same folks that we reached out to earlier. So, family court, prosecutor's office, law enforcement, some of our folks, probably jobs and family services, and maybe some of the counseling agencies as well. We did speak to some special ed law attorneys as possibly presenting some information to the task force in relation to not just special ed, but really what we can and can't do in regard to student discipline. That might be an option for us. So, kind of wanted to throw that out there, I don't know if you want to wait till discussion, or if you want to kind of open that forum up now to have some more conversation about that?
I think while we're on the topic, we might as well. So, we'll get details concerning that eventually, I assume? Okay.
I just wanted kind of some direction before I start to put together plans.
Gotcha, fair enough, and I do appreciate that it's on the agenda this month. I know that last month, we did not have any discipline-related items on the agenda last month, and I'm going to put this into some context. Dr. Iarisi, you gave a radio interview with Scott Spears on April 21st of this year, so not too long ago. About the 38-minute mark, you were asked a question. Why wasn't the task force put on the agenda? When you answered the quest, well, you didn't really answer the question. The statement was, "Well, I don't really think that the two new board members," direct quote, "don't fully understand how a board meeting operates." Okay, so before we get into that, I did want to read from policy, board policy, 0165.1, just to clear up how the agenda is set. Now, even if I don't fully understand how a board meeting operates, I can read policy. From policy, again, 0165.1. "It shall be the responsibility of the superintendent, in cooperation with the board president, to prepare an agenda, the items of business, to come before the board at each regular meeting." To me, it's very similar to the House of Representatives, where the Speaker of the House and the House Majority Leader get to pretty much determine what the House is going to do, and if you're the House Minority Leader, good luck. So, after reading the policy here, and knowing full well that it is the board president and the superintendent that prepare the agenda, I'm going to give you the opportunity to answer the question again. And again, I very much appreciate it being on the agenda this time. Why wasn't the task force on the agenda last month? In fact, why was there not one discipline issue on the agenda last month when we, for I don't know how many months now, consecutively, members of the public, be they parents, or teachers, or you name it, discipline is a major issue, and we were about to go a whole month without even discussing?
Yeah, thanks for that question. I guess probably at that point, as we were, I don't know how many meetings in we were at that point, but, you know, typically, the way we've operated was there's that portion of the agenda where it's open for discussion. And so, I just assumed that that's where we would have those conversations, because in relation to, you know, me bringing something else to the board meeting itself, which I think we discussed at last board meeting, I think it was Mr. Ratliff that said that he wanted this as a topic of discussion at every board meeting.
Well, yeah, he presented it early, Mr. Ratliff, I don't want to speak for you, but it was very quickly after the meeting in, oh, that would have been March then, and President McKay, you agreed that the task force sounded like a great idea. And then, you know, Mr. Ratliff laid out a very good plan, I thought anyways. But again, it wasn't going to be addressed, no discipline issue was, so. But I just wanted to make that clear, and then one last thing with the radio interview, with again, the two new board members who don't fully understand how a board meeting operates. And I understand that the issue with the public statements that are being made, and you did clearly state that it's fine for a board member to ask questions, but that a lot of times, some of that gets done before the board meeting takes place, and I want to continue to read from the same policy. "Each agenda shall contain the following statement. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business." And I know President McKay has mentioned that it is in public, okay, but it's not a public meeting, in terms of that, but there has been no public discourse. So, when we have people, unless they've been an invited guest, who are presenting something, there has not been discourse between any of the board members, nor the members of the public. They have spoken, as they are permitted to, we have listened. If we have deemed it necessary, we have added items to the agenda, just to let them know that we truly are listening. Another policy, again, 01692, open meeting sunshine law, a meeting, or sunshine law applies to the board, and a meeting refers to which the sunshine law applies is any pre-arranged discussion of the public business of the board. One more time, philosophy of the board, 0118. "The board shall keep them, the citizens of the district, informed of the progress and problems of the school district." I know no better way than to have our discussions public, so that the public has some clue as to how their district is being run, okay? And again, I've understood very well, I think it was Mr. McKinnis that brought, we don't want any surprises, and I understand that, we sometimes are not prepared to answer questions. You don't want that gotcha moment. But for us to ask questions about how we're spending money, where we're spending money, why do we have this policy, why do we not? To me, as an elected member, and I've said this so many times, that's the best way for the public to know, so I will not apologize for that. And I will continue to do that for as long as I'm on the board. So again, I do sincerely thank you that the task force has been addressed, it's been brought up, it's been placed on the agenda, but I did want to clear that up, so. That's all I have on that issue.
If I might just respond, maybe I'm getting my meetings mixed up, but the last board meeting, I remember very clearly listing all of the things under hold business, that we did talk about the discipline issue, and I remember distinctly that I listed out all the things that we are doing. So, maybe I'm getting my meetings mixed up, but it was...
It was added to the agenda after?
It may not have been on the agenda, but it was, I think it was under hold business.
That's my, and again, in cooperation with the board president, superintendent, to prepare an agenda for the items of business.
When you say all the things we're doing, I don't know what we're doing, to be honest, because we had one meeting, he went downtown, you guys had one meeting, we went out to Taft one time, we sent them to training, but as far as follow-up, we've had none. I've asked for this committee to be formed for two months. I'm glad you guys are finally getting on the page after person after person comes and talks, after two months, I know, you know, maybe we should have some interventions about slow learning or something, but we've heard it for two months. And now, we're finally coming to, oh, we might get around to a committee. I don't know why this has taken so long. We've had the public and the teachers and all staff members demanding action, and here we sit, and we're still talking about maybe doing something. I'm just appalled at the speed that we're going at. It's at a snail's pace at best, and we had one meeting, there was no meeting the next month, so I don't know how this is so good. And I remind you, you know, some of the behaviors that we're having at some of the institutions, meaning Taft, if we want to talk about Taft, this board, along with this administration, got rid of the behavioral specialist that was over there, two years ago. And now, all of a sudden, we have behavior problems over there. Who'd have figured that? And then, we talked about this board, and this administration, had talked about getting rid of the ESPs, and giving it to the red zone, who then got in trouble, and we didn't do that. So, you can't then go into the paper and say, wow, we're putting a behavioral specialist over there, without telling them, you cut it two years prior. You can't go into the paper and talk about, look at us, we're going to have ESPs, when you talk about cutting it. You can't cut stuff and then get credit for bringing back what you cut. That's not how that works.
Now, May 5th, I received an email stating canceled event, follow-up discipline meeting that was scheduled for Thursday, May 12th, it was canceled on May 5th. I never received an explanation as to why, or rescheduling, or I don't know. So, we can tout that first meeting all we want, but there's, as far as I know, there's not a second, so.
Well, because it's going to be part of the task force that has now been scheduled, and so inviting the same people, it's going to be duplication.
There is not a task.
I don't want to list all of the things, I list...
That's fine, there's not a task, there's not a task force, Ted.
I don't want the public thinking we're not doing anything.
Well, tell me what we're doing.
We're doing PACS training, you want me to list it again, I will. We're doing PACS training, we're doing de-escalation rooms.
What the board voted down.
We did that immediately at Taft, we're doing that again at all the buildings, not just Taft. We have put more ESPs in buildings today than we've ever had.
You understand PACS training, we voted down, at least it did not pass.
We don't want to argue that again, because PACS has been with us for two years, and we, it was not voted down.
It was not renewed, how about that?
A contract was voted down, it was not, that was not a renewal of the PACS.
Okay, you can play semantics with the public all you want.
I think, I hope this board gets back to what we're in business about, and that's the kids. It's not playing gotcha about this, or telling everything, finding everything you can bad about this district. Yesterday, in the paper, Kaylee Crockett, tears came to my eyes when I read the progress she made and the credit she gave to this staff sitting out there today, and the accomplishment she came from very socioeconomic basis and excelled in this district. Those are the stories we need to be telling people about. Not that we are performing in a way that you see us, I see us in a whole different light. We're performing well, our reading scores are inching up, not where we want them to be, they're inching up. We've put things in place for literacy, to help our kids. It's about the kids, it's not about playing gotcha with these different things.
Okay, if it's about the kids, Ted, why have we not done something in two months about disciplining these kids, or getting them help?
I haven't heard a single suggestion you've made about what to do.
I said this task force two months ago. Did you not get the email, did you not read them?
I do.
Okay, then I said it two months ago, they just explained I said it before. The superintendent did, and you just said the task force.
What do you expect the task force?
Are we doing a task force? Because he didn't say that.
We are.
He said there's two options. That ain't even been voted on, so we don't even know if we're doing a task force, so don't tell them we're doing a task force until you do a task force.
It's kind of hard to argue with you about these things, because I don't think you see them clearly, I'm sorry, that's my opinion. We are doing a task force, the task force will hear from more people that we've already heard from for two months.
I received an email.
It's time for us to put things in place. I haven't heard a suggestion in all those three months of people coming to us, what do we do? And I know we're doing things to make it, this district safer for our staff, to help our students succeed. That's what it's all about, our kids, it's not about the gotchas.
Then do something.
So, I heard, I met with the principal at Taft on Friday, the 13th, and I think if we look at the whole behavior thing in an umbrella, are you guys familiar with PBIS? Have you guys been trained?
I have not been trained.
And so, it's all, well, I think it's, it would behoove us to look at every school's PBIS training, which deals from a positive deficit, and then everything else is an umbrella, which is PACS, some people still use LEADER and ME, Haze doesn't use it because they couldn't sustain the cost. And then also, I saw on the calendar that they were doing some restorative training, and I think teachers are going to be trained, when you talk about what are we doing? Well, we're trying to give teachers something in their toolkits so that they can handle discipline. I did, I was in one teacher's room who did use PACS, and PACS worked very, very well in that particular classroom. So, I think it's erroneous to say that we're not doing anything, because in each one of the buildings that I've went to, I looked at their PBIS manuals from a positive perspective, but I also know that discipline is an issue, so I think it's erroneous to say we're not trying to do something. We're looking at restorative practices, we're trying to get teachers trained in that, which I think is later on down in the agenda. So, I think it's important for us to look at the whole umbrella, PBIS, PACS, sometimes LEADER and ME, restorative practices, getting our teachers trained so that they have something in their toolkits to help them to manage this discipline.
Right. I agree. I mean, we are doing a lot of things, as Ted indicated.
We are doing something.
We are doing a lot of things, and we're doing, we're looking into those de-escalation rooms, we'll have those. Will those, Ron, be in every elementary building next year, or the de-escalation rooms?
De-escalation, well, actually, they were, the jobs have been posted.
Right.
And we're just having some conversations about really what that looks like. We didn't get a lot of response from the posting for, because our direction that we were headed into was getting qualified and trained teachers into those positions. And we haven't had a lot of response, and we may have to kind of reevaluate, you know, what we're looking for specifically to put in those rooms. I'm actually, you know, think it's, I was hoping that we would get an opportunity to kind of finish the year with the de-escalation room, just to kind of pilot that, see what it does, see what we need to tweak. We did reach out to some folks, I think, that are going to give us some direction, that have used these in the past. Hopefully, they're going to be meeting with us over the summer. Columbus Public School, a couple of their buildings had some really good success with their de-escalation rooms, and some other PBIS, how they integrated that and restorative practices into it, so.
Do we have rooms prepared in every building, just in case? I know Taft was preparing a de-escalation room, and do we...
Taft, GW, and McKinley right now are the rooms that we've kind of targeted as those, but we do have space in the other rooms.
So, the actual topic update was task force update? Where are we on a task force?
You asked the question.
I did.
And I would recommend that it be a special board meeting, so all board members can attend, because I think then one of, you know, some of us might be left out, and then you have to update, I would like to hear it directly, and it would be hard for just, who's going to go, if you pick two out of five? So, I'd like to see it in a special board meeting, at least the first time, and invite all those people, the Adam Board, anyone in Marion that has a connection with mental health and/or child programs, or law enforcement, the courts, and of course, our own staff,
Once I have that direction, I can kind of communicate that through my updates to make sure that...
So, we don't have a task force, is what we have? We have an idea that you sent out, and Kelly sent out last month. One is an open board meeting, the other one is to have a couple nominations, I think it was, and all these other people, correct? So, we can relay to the public, we at least have two ideas on the table, and we still haven't picked one.
No, I think he wants to know which one, do we want a special board meeting, or just
Yeah, but you were just representing to these fine people that we already had that picked, it's untrue.
I didn't represent anything to that effect.
Okay.
He has, you gave a list of people you would suggest being there, representing the community, and he has a list of those, he wants, I think we all know who those folks are, and my only suggestion was that all the board members attend in a special meeting, so that we can be there. And other than that, I think your list and his list, Dr. Iarisi's list combined, will make a fine group of 15 or so people that can be there and discuss discipline in the Marion City Schools.
So, you're having a special board meeting and putting community members on there?
They're going to be invited to that special board meeting, to sit at a table with us and have input about the problems we're having in the Marion City Schools regarding discipline.
And I think Taft had their coffee and conversation with the principal, didn't they do that for like six weeks or so, and talked about issues?
So, we're asking them to present, or are you asking them to vote on recommendation? What are you asking them to do? Just come to a board meeting? Because we can do that any day, we don't need a special one.
No, I think it'll be a task force committee with five board members on it. We just have to call it a special board meeting, so we can all be in the same room.
Okay.
And around that table will be people with suggestions and ideas and thoughts, and we may even have a segment where public can present to us. But I think all of us will have, hopefully, suggestions about telling that group what we're doing and what we can do, and Dr. Iarisi just suggested someone that can tell us what we can do legally in the discipline area, and I think that's important, so. If you have suggestions for presenters, certainly bring them.
I gave them two months ago, I can't keep just doing them because you guys don't have
You just had a list of people, you didn't have a presenter, so.
Well, I mean, I left it up to, my suggestion was to give it to the juvenile court, and they can present who they want to present. To leave it up to the chief of police, he can send him or a representative. I can't tell these people to show up.
No, but they will send somebody. They did last time when we...
Well, I'm hoping to do it before next school year, which that's September, September...
Right after May 31st, sometime next week.
So, what am I hearing? What are you going to do about this task?
I'm hearing it's a little bit of a combination of both, from what Kelly and I discussed, so we will have almost like a roundtable discussion, if you will, about bringing some folks in to maybe make some suggestions, hear what some specific issues are, and then hopefully some, you know, every time we've kind of done this, just like at Taft, we walked away with some actionable items. So, we walked away with the idea of, let's put a de-escalation room in place, let's have a remote day so that staff could do de-escalation training. I think as a district, at that point, I hope to have that same thing accomplished. So, based on those discussions and some presentations, then we kind of open the floor for maybe a strategic plan that we can walk away with specifically around this.
There, I would invite everybody to contact the OSBA, you can go on their website and get this little booklet called Student Discipline in Ohio. It's not a hard book, it's about six chapters. So, before we go into those kinds of task force meetings, it's important to know what really we can and cannot do. And this is a really good guide, I'm two-thirds of the way through it, and so I really recommend that, you know, if we're going to participate as a board to do this, that we inform ourselves of the law, so that we're not suggesting things that are outside the scope of the idea, the federal law and Ohio law. And probably, I'm looking for Jen Sheridan, I know she was here, she would need to be on that task force, for sure, so that she could talk to us and give us some ideas about how we follow the law for these important conversations in our community. So, we have a little bit of a plan, I believe. So, I'm going to go on to summer school, Ron?
I did leave you a handout, I just wanted to kind of give you an update, since we're getting ready to start summer school. These are some of the programs that we will be offering in the summer, the locations, times, and as of now, some of the registered students that we have. So, again, we have some very good opportunities for our students to get kind of caught up. We also have enrichment camps, and then don't forget, we've got some grant money to support a lot of these programs along the way, so that's going to be very helpful.
Does support mean also summer jobs still for those students 14 to 16?
We do, there is a contract on the board agenda with jobs in family services that, I'm not sure you're familiar with how that works, but they recruit some students within that age, and they work so many hours a week, they're limited in what they can do, but jobs in family services provides a job coach for those students to be, you know, make sure they're getting to work on time and learning about what it's like to have a job, so. And thanks to our folks here, too, it's not always, you know, it's not always easy to do your work and in the same time, kind of oversee some of those students, but that's a really important part, and a great opportunity for them to experience some growth, so.
Thank you. All right, we'll go on to item five, treasurer's report. This is board minute approval of the minutes for 411, 414, and 419. Do I have a motion, please?
Sure, move.
Second.
Discussion?
In the April 14th minute meetings, there was after discussion, a motion, we didn't, we adjourned, we discussed and then adjourned, we didn't follow it up, but there was a motion made for Ms. Dyer to be a new board member. It was not seconded, we went into further discussion, and eventually, we adjourned.
So, it failed for lack of second?
Yes.
Okay.
I would assume. We chose not to, at some point, we discussed, and then we adjourned, we had a motion to adjourn.
I'll fix that.
So, I don't know that we necessarily pushed a vote that night, I guess, I don't know how to say that, but there was a motion, there was no second, we did further discussion, and there was no vote.
So, there was a first, but no second?
Correct.
Correct.
So, it died for a lack of...
Then there was further discussions, and then we finally adjourned.
Okay, I can do that.
After a lengthy discussion, I don't know what to say, but we had a lengthy discussion about the candidates, and then left.
Who made that initial motion?
Ted.
Ted, okay, got it.
Okay. All right.
I'm going to do this with changes on the 414.
And obviously, we were the only four in the room at that point.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
You captured that. All right. Please call the roll, Veronica.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yep.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Motion carried. All right, we'll go to the five-year forecast.
Okay. I'm going to have a little presentation up here to kind of go, I don't know why this is doing this, to go over the forecast, and I want to talk about the forecast tonight, and I also want to talk a little bit about our SRF funds and how that interacts with all this. So, we're going to start out with, you know, what changed from the fall to the spring? We have to do a forecast in November, and we have to do one in May. So, in the fall, we did not know what our state funding was, and we did talk quite a bit at the state of the schools about our state funding and how it changed this year.
how it changed this year and what it looks like. So I'm not going to go into extreme detail on that. But we did get our final calculations for our state funding for fiscal year '22 in February. So there were some changes from what we had estimated, our original forecast had estimates from when the bill was enacted in June of '21. So once everything fell out and they did all the final calculations, we got those numbers in February. So the fall forecast was definitely an estimate on state funding. And I just wanted to say that the reminder was that the state funding formula changed and now it provides our revenue based on the number of kids that we actually educate in the district. There's no more calculation of money in for open enrollment and money out for open enrollment. We used to get funded for community school kids and they would get paid, that money would get paid out. Now all the money goes directly to the entity that's educating the kids. So, you know, in terms of, you know, our world, the financial world, that was a big change for us because now our financials look a little different than they did in the past. In the end, the numbers are all work out. It just works out in a different way. So some of the state funding changes also that happened is we have a base funding calculation of, hey, based on your kids, this is what you should get funded based on the funding bill. This is what you got funded last year and there's a difference in those two numbers. And we're going to phase that in over six years. So we are getting 16, we got a 16% increase this year in our base funding. We didn't get 100% of what our calculation is. We just got 16%. That's about $500,000. Then there's also a calculation for disadvantaged students. We did not get anything for that this year. They're going to start funding that next year in fiscal year '23 and we'll get 14% of that increase in fiscal year '23. So we're going to have a base increase next year of $500,000 for our base funding, of which we also got this year. And then we're going to get next year an increase for disadvantaged students, which is $500,000. We got no increase for that this year. So when we did the original calculations, well, when the state had done the original calculations, they did not know that there was going to be a pushback on the disadvantaged student funding until next year. So over the course of fiscal year '22 and '23, our state funding ends up being pretty much what we had estimated in the fall. It just falls in just different fiscal years. So I think that was the last line here. The increase was less this year than we anticipated, but '23 is more and those two years together were washing our forecasts in terms of state funding. Another thing that happened this year that I hadn't anticipated, we did get two Medicaid state settlements. We got fiscal year '20 and '19. We just completed all the information, or we're completing all the information for fiscal year '21. So fiscal year '21 Medicaid reimbursement we'll get in '22 and now we'll be on, in the right fiscal year for our Medicaid reimbursements. Things that changed in expenses, overall, our expenses are also similar to the fall of '22, but in different line item, there are different things happen in different line items. We had anticipated some increase in staffing. Instead of taking it from our general fund, we did take it out of ESR funds. So our actual salaries were a little bit less, but our purchase services ended up being higher. We had quite, our utilities increased and our excess costs that we paid to other districts increased this year. And then another big change from the fall is that our medical insurance costs are going to increase in fiscal year '23 more than what we had anticipated in the fall. We have not received the final increase, but it looks like it'll be around 7%. And instead of having two premium holidays, we'll only have one. And that is a pretty significant number for our increase for fiscal year '23. So with all the use of our ESR funds and our increase in our state fundings, we have a positive cash balance and we're not expected to deficit spend in this forecast until fiscal year '25. And fiscal year '25, and I'm going to talk about this a little bit more, is when we no longer have ESR funds. So many of the things that we are helping to preserve our general fund right now will come back into the general fund in fiscal year '25. So, so I want to talk about these ESR funds and what they're for and what we've done with them. So you guys kind of have a picture on where, what we're using it for and how we're preserving our general fund a little bit. So we have gotten seven different rounds or different funding of COVID or ESR recovery funds. The first one we got was the CARES Recovery Fund. That was the very first amount of money we got and that was all for just, for cleaning our buildings and PPE and that was right when COVID hit. Then we got a broadband connectivity and that was to help us pay for, I'm telling you what they're for, but I'm going too deep about it. Then we got a round one of ESR funds. Then we got a round two of ESR funds. Then we got what was known as ARP ESR funds. That was in January '20. Then this past late summer, we were given two ARP homeless, money for homeless students, rounds one and round two. And we also received IDEA funds for K-12 through PK. All of this was CARES Act. When we were looking at this, we really looked at, you know, internally, we had some things that we were trying to do. And then I'm going to show you what some of the qualifying things are that we had to do from the federal side. But we, you know, definitely wanted to provide methods to bridge learning gaps that occurred from the pandemic. We wanted to be sure our technology was updated for all staffer students regardless if we were in person or if we had to do remote learning. And I think just an example of that is when we just said earlier tonight that TAF had a remote learning day so the teachers could do some professional development. We have the capability now to be able to do those things with the technology upgrades we did. With that technology, we have been trying to do a lot of infrastructure to make sure that, you know, our internet's working, our wifi, our servers and all those things. We have been looking at the safety and security of the students and staff during and after the pandemic. We've done curricular updates for all grade levels. We've done some upgrades to buildings, professional development. We've provided additional opportunities for our students and we've also tried to sustain the fiscal help of the district. So I'm going to go through each one of these funds and if you have any questions along the way, please ask. So the first thing we received, like I said, with the CRF funds, that was $255,000. That was granted in the spring of 2020 and that was entirely used on PPE and cleaning supplies for the district. It seems like a lot of money, but that went really fast. We were providing masks and disinfectants. That's when we bought the backpack cleaners for the custodians to be able to clean the rooms better. And that money went very fast. Then we received the broadband connectivity funds. And this was the original one we received, which was $151,000. And what this was for is to ensure that our families had a connection to the internet, whether it was through a reimbursement for a connection or whether we gave them wifi directly from the district. After we were done with remote learning, we are now still getting broadband connectivity funds, kind of in a different way, but those are still to allow kids to have wifi devices remotely so that when they do have to have remote learning or to help them do their homework in the evening, they still have that available to them. Then we received ESR one funds. That was $1.7 million. They were to help implement return to school. What we used that for mainly was to support technology because we were remote learning and hybrid learning at the same time. And in order to do the remote learning, we needed some educational software. So what we, what we budgeted this for, and we used it in fiscal year '21 and '22, we bought a bunch of educational software. We spent the majority of it on Chromebooks. We did buy some PPE and then we did put some salaries in here for some of our tech. Then we received ESR two. That was $7.7 million and that lasts through the end of fiscal year '23. Those funds and the rest of the ESR funds have more parameters that we had to follow. Everything that we budgeted, we had to assign a parameter to it. I'm going to show you what they are. There are 15 different uses that you could budget this money for. And I'm not going to read every one of them to you. I also want you to know that, oops, one of them, one of them is missing. Go back to this. One of my pages is not there. I will get that for you, but again, there's 15 and I'm just going to read some of these from this section of it. You know, you can use it to plan and implement summer learning. You can address learning loss, facility repairs, provide leaders with necessary resources. And I apologize for that slide being missing. And again, like I said, I'll give it to you. But what we ended up using this first round for is we, in order to keep the health of our general fund as it was, we were able to pay, take about 13 salaries of employees who are involved in supporting reopening technology, custodian, communication. And we are paying for some of their salaries out of this ESR one. We were able to buy supplies for students at the beginning of the school year so that parents didn't have to buy them and we're going to continue to do that as long as we have these ESR funds. We've been able to provide extensive summer school with this grant through 2023. We were able to buy some industrial maintenance equipment to support a CTE program to give some additional opportunities to the kids. We were buying some classroom furniture. We did a high school temperature control system upgrade. Jake was able to buy some motors and controls throughout the district. We bought a bunch of servers and upgraded our infrastructure. We've done a lot of letters PD and be able to pay teachers stipends to do that in the summer. We were able to do the wonders, the CKLA pilot program out of this. We also bought the CKLA curriculum. We bought that out of this and CARES Act three. We were able to provide stipends to all of our employees for works, work that they had done to transition students from the hybrid back to in-person learning. We bought tons of educational technology, Chromebooks, Chromebook chargers, staff technology, BenQ boards, SEL screener. We brought, bought new library books for all the buildings. We provided literacy intervention resources, more PPE. And we bought a bunch of supplemental materials and textbooks as needed in various classrooms, which included things like AP textbooks, a lot of more fill-in books that we needed. Then we received COVID or ARP ESR funds, which we kind of refer to as CARES three. That was $17.6 million. And we received that at the end of fiscal year '24. Or we received that and that money is good through the end of fiscal year '24. They have the same parameters as fiscal year, as ESR two, as to what we could spend that money on. So again, we spent a lot of time, we probably spent two months last spring figuring out what it is we could spend this money on that would make us compliant with the grant and what was out there. And I just went one page too far. Excuse me. Sorry about that. I want one. I'm really having a struggle here today. What we spent ESR three money on, again, we continued to supplement some of our salaries. We actually added literacy coaches. We did two at the elementary, two at the middle and one at the high school. And we're also going to add third grade literacy supports for school year '23. We added attendance monitors. We did, we also have extensive summer school programming again and more classroom furniture, student supplies. We did the CKLA curriculum. We'll be able to purchase the math curriculum out of here. We're purchasing chillers at Grant. We provided the WEP programming and staffing. That was a new program after COVID. More servers and infrastructure for technology, letters PD, more Chromebooks, Chromebook chargers, staff technology, BenQ boards and classroom upgrades to support technology. We have some more library books in here. We have a lot of resources for literacy interventions. We have supplemental materials and textbooks in classrooms again. We are taking our hallway monitors out of here and then we'll be able to fund the de-escalation rooms out of this also, all supporting behaviors coming from COVID or supports that people need for, you know, learning losses that had happened. The next program we received, we received $291,000 from homeless, from ARP funds. Those funds were allocated for mental health services, emergency housing, if somebody became homeless and needed a place to stay. We're providing some basic supplies and needs for families in those situations. And we're also providing, we provided additional ESP support through that fund. We received the ARP ESR IDEA funds. Those were allocated for a transition coordinator at the high school, professional development. We can pay for goodwill training out of here for our students. And then we also did some supports and supplies for our special education program. So all of that stuff helped us provide a lot of things for our students and our staff that we probably, well, we wouldn't have been able to do directly out of our general fund. So then just a couple more things relating back to the original forecast. We did renew the emergency levy in the fall of 2021. That'll take effect in January 2023. Also, you know, we have to note that this was the first year of a biennial budget and I already talked about fiscal year '23 and what that looks like. After fiscal year '23, I didn't put any increase in the state funding. And the reason I didn't do that, even though they talked about a 16% increase in fiscal year '24 and 20, or '24 and '25, is because the state is also questioning cash balances of some of the districts around the state. And they're taking a close look at that, like, hey, if they're going to have this much cash on hand, do we really need to continue to fund this, this state funding model? You know, and I did take a look at that. There are, there are definitely some districts that are very cash flush right now. They have over a year's worth of cash on hand. And I'll show you in a minute how much we have, but we're not, I mean, while we're fiscally healthy, we're not in that situation. And then on the expense side, I just cannot talk enough that in fiscal year '25, you know, the CARES Act expenses that are, that are not in the general fund flow back into the general fund. Because you're, you're going to see in this model, a big, you know, hit to the expenses in that year. The salaries in here are built around the negotiated agreement amount and the only salary increases that are reflected after contracts under steps. The benefits again in fiscal year '23 are going up 7% and then it's 5% per year after that. Our purchase services also went up and you will also notice in fiscal year '23 that it seems to take a little bit higher jump. That's because we were paying for all of our ESPs out of student wellness and success monies that we had received several years ago from the state. That now is in the general fund. So now you'll see that there is an increase in purchase services for that next year to pay for those staff members. And then our supplies, we do have a little bit larger increase just because we anticipate the cost of everything is just going up right now. So this shows overall our trend of revenues from fiscal year '19 through fiscal year '25. And if you look in fiscal year '24, that little green portion, that was open enrollment previously. That goes away. There is no open enrollment. But you see the blue section, which is our state foundation, our state money goes up. That kind of offsets each other. The money that was coming in through open enrollment now comes in just through our state foundation. But as you can see, and the biggest thing that you can take away from this graph, is that most of our money does come from the state. That big blue section is all the money that we receive from the state every year. And that is why in our district in particular, it's really, it's really important to keep an eye on what's going on in the legislature and what they're talking about in terms of budgets and how that might affect us. Here is a graph of our expenses over the next several years. And again, you can see there in fiscal year '24 to '25, how, if everything remains the same, that money will flow back into the general fund. Just because we have it all coming back doesn't mean it all has to come back. And that is why we really have to monitor what we're doing really towards the end of '23 and then throughout '24 to know, hey, what are we actually going to, which one of these programs that we have done and implemented are worth keeping and which ones aren't financially? And then this, this is just a recap in the end of our revenues, our expenses and our cash balance. And if you kind of look between fiscal year '21 and fiscal year '22, it really looks like our revenues went down and it looks like our expenses went down. And again, that is all because of the way the state funding changed. And it changed because we're not paying out in our expenses for community schools and for open enrollment schools leaving. And our revenues all went down also because we're not getting the money in initially for those kids that we were paying the money out for. But as you can see, and this is definitely, while in fiscal year '25 there is deficit spending, we still end up with a positive cash balance throughout the course of the five years. This is another chart of our cash balances. So you can again see what happens in fiscal year '25. But in the end, I wanted to show you our cash days. You know, I've talked about this before and I know we have three new board members, but you never want to have less than 60 cash days. That's when you're starting to get a little concerned. And we have over 60 cash days through the end of your fiscal year '25. And that is probably one of the first times in our forecast that we have actually, actually can say that we were above 60 days at that point in time. Like, like I doubt that we're going to go to 71 days, but that is. Like, like, I doubt that we're going to go to seventy-one days, but that is, you know, four years down the road, not knowing a lot of things, not knowing where the state, how the state will fund, fund us after next year. You know, I'm fairly pleased with where we're at on this, which leads me, do you have any questions? I know that was a lot of information, and I talk fast, so.
I have a question.
Yes.
On the five-year forecast, I think it's this that you provided us, five-year forecast May, this chart. Down here at the bottom, you have a yellow highlighted area. So it goes fiscal year twenty twenty-two, we got ending cash balances sixteen million. Twenty twenty-six, we go from sixteen to four. How are we going to be able to sustain losing twelve million over those years?
Well, that was just what I was talking about in fiscal year twenty four to twenty five, when CARES Act, like, like, isn't here, we really have to be talking in twenty-three and twenty-four about what are we really going to push back into, what programs are we going to sustain and what may we not sustain? Because the assumption I have right now is everything that's going to the CARES Act is coming back into the general fund in fiscal year twenty five.
Okay. Why would we wait till twenty-three, twenty-four? Why won't we start planning now?
Well, we have been planning internally.
Because quite honestly, I'm looking at your salaries and wages, and you have it increasing, right? The fringe benefits are increasing, purchases of services, supply materials are like doubled, capital outlay kind of stays the same, repayment of debt service is about the same, but the non-operating expenditures are down like two million dollars, and the other expenditures are down two hundred. So in actuality, this number down here, even if it stayed the same of what you have, we're two million short on the twenty twenty-six forecast, because you did not, I mean, I don't know how we're going to cut operating, non-operating expenditures. We had them in fiscal year twenty twenty-one at two point eight million. This year, they're two point six, and we're going to all of a sudden in twenty twenty-six go to seven hundred and sixty-five thousand. I mean, we're going to cut two million out of non-operating expenditures that we haven't done in the last two years?
So the non-operating expenditures are transfers for, I think I talked about it in my update, for capital and for our severance pay account. We, we will have the severance pay account funded after this year, so the transfers to that will be at a minimal amount, because it will just be an upkeep. The other thing is, we were at a time transferring.
Yeah, hold on a second. When you say that, we had something, I mean, I think it's on here to tonight.
Six hundred and twenty-five.
Six hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
Okay? That goes from general fund to severance. We did six hundred and fifty last year.
Right.
So we're just doing six fifty every year?
We will not be continuing to do that, because what it is, is we have, we had never done this before, so we created this fund to allow for ups and downs of people taking severance pay. Like, this year, if we have three people leave, it's going to be a small amount. Next year, we might have five. So we looked at who all potentially is retiring, and we had decided last year that we wanted to make a fund to put money in there, so we always had that money reserved to be able to pay those people as they leave. So we didn't have to worry about a fluctuation in our general fund over that. That amount that we will have in there after this year, so we, we didn't want to fund the whole thing fully last year, so we said, let's do it over two years. So this year is the second year of that funding. So after, so going forward, what will happen is, hey, we have ten people that are eligible now to retire, not ten, like, five or whatever that might be next year. What would that cost us if we paid it out?
No, I appreciate that, but that's six hundred and fifty. If I add that to seven sixty-five, I mean, I'm not the best at math, I'm still one and a half short. So I mean, these numbers and the ending cash balances, even less than that, I mean.
Rocky from the Finance Committee, look at the top, though. The state foundation money, she has budgeted flat, and I don't think we've maybe one year had a zero increase. So this year, we had sixteen percent. And they're forecasting at the state level that we, so if you add a million or even something in there, that's going to increase that and wipe out some of that. But there's still a very important point she made, keep your eyes into the future, that might, maybe some programs, some of the things we've done might have to be changed.
No, I appreciate that. What I'm saying is, you know, I get weather forecasts all the time on the nightly news, and they're half right, so we can't go by anything that the state is forecasting. What I'm saying is, and she's even given us a heads up a couple years early, that we might have to start looking at programs to cut. I'm saying we should be looking now and not waiting till cutting day, and then all of a sudden, hey, what are we cutting? I mean, if we know it's coming down the road, I would like to, the board or the administration to start making priority lists, that we got to start talking about and debating on a priority list, because the board's priority list might not be the same as the administrator's, might not be the same as the public's. So we need to start on that.
Yeah, some type of criteria to judge the, the value of these programs, excuse me, in terms of getting, you know, the bang for your buck and all that other stuff. I don't know, have there been specific conversations concerning that? Hey, the evaluation of these programs needs to begin quickly. Is there a set, again, criteria, I guess, to, to evaluate the programs we've decided because we've had the extra money?
Yeah, I would say a lot of that, you know, is directly related to some student achievement. So as we continue to monitor where we're at, you know, we've implemented, and we've spent money on our career pathways, but, you know, we've, we've gotten a lot of grant money to be able to do that. And now that, you know, we haven't really figured into the, the equation as far as those career pathway dollars, because as long as we meet all the criteria at the state level, there's weighted funding that goes along with that. So, you know, but if we're have, if we have four kids signed up in industrial maintenance for three years from now, then we have to take a look at that program and say, hey, this, you know, if this isn't headed in the right direction, those are the things that, that we have to evaluate.
No, I appreciate she's saying we're fine now, and I appreciate that several years from now, we might not be, depending on what the state does, because a lot of our funding comes from them. I appreciate what she's saying. I guess my point is, I don't want to have, for lack of better example, the gear up when people are wanting to come in and save a program right at the last minute, and we really can't, or, you know, whatever. I'm hoping we have these discussions earlier to avoid all that.
I agree.
You know, so, I mean, and we know that, you know, we don't have infinite funds.
Right.
I mean.
So, I mean, if you've noticed too, and over the last six years, I think the last time we've deficit spent was what?
Twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen. So, I mean, that's, that's an important part of planning every year. I mean, my, my philosophy is to never deficit spend, and even though it shows a deficit spend in the, in the forecast, you know, if you look back three years ago and looked at this year, it probably showed that we were deficit spending, and we don't do that. We don't deficit spend, so we evaluate on a yearly basis, these, this is our revenue, here's what we can afford, and sometimes we do some things through attrition, and that's always the way we like to do it. If we need to, you know, if our class numbers are going down, like it says, and our enrollment's going down, then we have to have our staffing levels according. And so we've made those adjustments, and I think that's why we've been able to do that. And, you know, thankfully, we've made some decisions about the S R funds, that we've been able to extend out some of those programs to give those, them that opportunity to work. You know, for example, we're, we're adding some third grade literacy specialists, because, you know, our second graders were the ones that were probably most affected by the pandemic. I mean, they basically did not have a normal school year since they were in kindergarten, and their scores are reflective of that. And so we know we have to put emphasis in the third grade, so we're going to provide additional literacy supports in third. Hopefully, in a year from now, we won't, you know, we may not need that, that support. So those are the kinds of things I think we evaluate on a regular basis.
I think Mr. Ratliff makes a good point, and we, we do have our eyes on that. The Finance Committee thoroughly discussed that at our Finance Committee meeting this month, and we're looking ahead, and I've been doing this for thirty-five years, and we've always looked ahead at these forecasts very carefully. I unfortunately, I see Mr. White sitting back there in the audience. We had a time when we had very little money cash balance, and we had to cut significantly from our staff, and it hurt deeply, not only our staff, but, but those of us who had to go through it. We don't want to do that again. That was a sudden event that we don't want to get into that. So, Mr. Ratliff, you're right, and we will keep our eyes on that.
Yeah, I just hope we are in a, at some point, we start developing priority lists of what, you know, maybe we can do without, that is excess, I guess.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, I appreciate the question. Okay.
I'm moved to approve the financial forecast as submitted.
One second.
And I think we've had our discussion, unless there's more. All right. Veronica, please call the roll.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion approved. All right. Financial approvals. So we have donations for Grant Robotics, and you'll see those amounts there. A donation to Withrow Equity Center, and fund transfers, fund-to-fund transfers, capital funds of a million dollars, terrific placement funds, twenty-five thousand, and our severance pay fund that we just discussed for six hundred and fifty thousand. Do I have a motion, please?
So, move. Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, on the capital funds, the million, is that just so we have some extra over there?
So you, in the buildings and grounds, Jake always goes over all the things that he wants to do, and, and this helps support all of the things that he has. Just, I don't, I don't know if I ever made it really clear, we used to just take that all the general fund, but you know, at the end of every fiscal year, you got to close everything and reopen it, just kind of created a big problem for them. So we created this fund, they could just take their money out and use it on buildings. And I know he's got, well, there's three on here, and I know he still wants to do some asphalt and all that, so yeah.
Yeah, it's money for additional projects in that we expect in the next fiscal year that's not on tonight's.
Correct.
Is that safe?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Dr. Irucci, it looks like the donations to Grant Robotics really paid off. Do you have something exciting to announce about our Grants Robotics team?
We do. I believe that this is the first time ever that we've walked away from the world competition with an award, so the design award for those folks. So again, credit to the staff over at Grant and the advisors to that. I know the kids had a great time. I don't know if you got a chance to follow them along on social media as they competed, it was nice to see them.
Came back with lots of cowboy hats or something.
Great. All right. Veronica, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carries. We come now to the hearing of the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value to school governance of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Public participation is a time set aside for the board to listen to public comments, but it is not intended as a time for dialogue. The Board offers public participation to members of the public in accordance with the procedures below. The Board applies these procedures to all speakers and does not discriminate based on identity of the speaker, content of the speech, or viewpoint of the speaker. The Board is also committed to conducting its meeting in a productive and efficient manner that assures that the regular agenda of the Board is completed in a reasonable period of time, honors the voluntary nature of the Board's time, and using that time efficiently, and allows for a fair and adequate opportunity for input to be considered. Consequently, the public participation at Board meetings will be governed by this bylaw. And if you signed in and handed me a sheet, I'm going to start with Tony Weber, and we have, each person has three minutes to comment.
All right, I'd like to thank you for always allowing us to speak. Sometimes it's not the easiest thing to do. I'd like to welcome Ms. Dyer, being on the board.
Thank you.
Glad to have you here. And, you know, as you know, I've, I've spoke many times. Sometimes people may not agree that teachers should be speaking at Board meetings, but I believe that you guys know how I care for the students at B H E and the teachers. My time is short, so let me get right to it. Again, I feel the culture at our district is not very good. Our teachers are struggling still. We have teachers being hit. We've had all these discussions of the last couple Board meetings coming through, and with teachers complaining, and hopefully some things will be done. But here are some of the things that have come to my notice, that people have talked to me about, and please, what I would urge you to do is go around and talk to a lot of the teachers, former principals, students, public, because there are some problems in our district, and in just no particular order, some of the things that I've heard from past principals. I've heard that some of them have been told that, that when they were hired, your job is to keep upper management to look good. Principal told, keep your staff in line. A former principal last year out in the public said, Tony, keep on the fight, because it's a mess up there. Please talk to some of these people. Go hunt them out, maybe talk to some of our resource officers, people in, in the sheriff's office, former teachers, principals, retired administrators in this district. Why do we have five principals last year leaving, six or seven this year leaving? Please talk to retired teachers. I was told by a, a special ed teacher, she was told that, oh, you weren't special ed, it's okay if you get hit, it's not that much a problem. Teachers are stressed. We have teachers that have retired due to medical issues, former administrative assistants retired early due to medical issues. We have our M E A meeting, it, it, it doesn't sound good for Marion City Schools. Please, talk to these people. We need some help with our upper administration. There are many things we as teachers see. Please, don't listen to me, go find out for yourself, talk to these people, because I'm hearing it, it's out there. Do some research, because we are in disheaval. Thank you. Thank you.
Jerry Peterson.
Good afternoon, everyone. I want to thank you for this opportunity to be able to present to you today. I'm my first, not my first time here, but being here, I'm, I'm hearing a lot about the discipline side of this, but I'm looking about, what are we going to do to satisfy our kids? Because one of the things about this, trouble doesn't start to happen, we looking at the whats and not the whys. When we start looking at the whys, we can probably prevent some of the whats happening. I sympathize with the teachers, but I also sympathize with the children. I heard Mr. Ratliff say, when are we going to get these disciplinary issues in place? When are we going to get these understandings in place is my concern. Our kids need help. We need compassion. We need people who understand that children are living in environments, the pandemic affect all of us. And so if we don't have an opportunity to kind of open up our hearts to these kids, bring these kids under our wings, stop looking at them as a problem and looking at them as, as, as something that we need to solve, to help, you know what I'm saying? Because I just don't believe that we have to discipline our children in the way you wish to go. I think we need to sit down and have an understanding of what our children are experiencing. If we take that opportunity, our city, in this community, even outside of the education department, we are having troubles. You know, violence, drugs, you know, families. You know, violence, drugs, you know, families are feeling left out. So we're trying to look at the source of a small child. What are we gonna do about the parents? How are we assisting them in managing their children that they're sending into our schools? Are we giving them resources? Are we considering bringing them in and understanding what they're going through? The pandemic affect everybody. Jobs are being lost, people are no longer able to work. If they are able to work, then they can't manage their children. I was in a program once that was established where we all had to role play. And we, and I was a family, I was a mother who was on drugs, who had two children. Both of those kids was in and out of the system. I couldn't work because I was running behind my children. And so therefore, there was a lot of lack in being a good parent, because I'm going to the probation officer, I'm going to a drug counselor for myself. All those things are possible. When are we gonna start looking at solutions and not trying to criminalize these kids? Because that's what they are. They are our kids. A community needs to rally around them. We don't need to separate them out. We don't need to throw them away. We need to try to help them. What are we doing to help them? Not discipline them, but what are we doing to help? All right? I sympathize with these teachers. I hope that some solution happens where these teachers, as well as these students, are getting some help. So as a Board member, what are you shifting your resources to, trying to help them solve this problem that we're facing? I just, this is my first experience of talking to you, but as I listen to you, I'm hearing more discipline than I am hearing helping.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Appreciate it. Jackie Peterson.
Thank you to the Board for giving me this opportunity to address the Board this evening. My name is Jackie Peterson, and I'm the Senior Pastor of Logos Christian Ministries here in Marion. I'm a resident on Lee Street. I'm always nervous when I speak in front of people, I've been doing it for a long time. I've been pastoring for 13 years, and I'm a Board Member of the Buckeye Ridge Habitat of Humanity, North Central Ohio Union, United Way, Marion Area Transit, and recently appointed Board Member of the Ohio Health, and I'm a core member of the Marion Minority Commission. I was a mentor for two wonderful little girls at the Hayes Elementary School for two years prior to COVID. My church had an afternoon school learning center to support those children that needed any additional help. Again, when COVID hit, we shut down. However, this past summer, we had a chance to reopen for four weeks, and the children got a chance to visit the library a couple of times, for a couple of times, and then the children got an opportunity to get their library cards. I'm a proud graduate of the class of 1975 from Harding High School and a proud prece and president. I care about the children in this district. A couple of years back, I was on Facebook Live, which is scary to me, at 6:30 a.m., Monday through Friday, praying for our children, the teachers, the administrators, the principals, the coaches, the nurses, the cooks, the secretaries, the maintenance persons, the bus drivers, the bus attendants, the guidance councils, et cetera. I would ask God to cover every door, every window, to keep those buildings and those inside safe. Why am I saying all this? I'm saying this to let the Board know that the people in this room do care about the district. I mentioned that I'm a core member of the Marion Minority Commission. Several of us that was a part of that commission, we've been meeting, or had been meeting, with the superintendents of this district way back when Mr. Barber was superintendent, along with the assistant superintendent, and the interim superintendent after Mr. Barber and Mr. Dr. Irucci right now. Myself and another young man of the community used to attend the Board meetings regularly. Mr. McInnes can attend to that, and Dr. Irucci. Because of scheduling conflicts and COVID, however, we did not come. However, we've been watching online. I have no children in this district. I'm way past that age, but I do care. My desire is to see this Board work together for the benefits of all the children in this district. If there's peace on the Board, that peace will run down to the superintendents, the principals, the administrators, the teachers, the coaches, the nurses, the cooks, the maintenance persons, the bus drivers. I'm sorry, my time is up. Will there be disagreements? Yes, there will be, but I've always leaned to the scripture that says, "Come now and let us reason together." In other words, respect one another, listen to one another, because the future of our children are at stake. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jackson, Sean Jackson.
Good evening, everyone. Glad to be here this evening. And I was just about ready to sit back there and say I was gonna cede my time, but I just wanted to say that I'm glad to be here today. Of course, some of you may know that I am a former teacher here in the Marion City Schools. Been out of the system for about 17 years now, and of course, hearing some of the challenges that teachers have, administrators have, and some of the students have, has basically made me very concerned about what's going on within our system, within the community, because as others have already said, I love this community. You know, I had four children that came through the Marion City Schools, and the Marion City Schools is a great school system, and I'm sure that we have some, you know, we have some challenges. But I have two grandchildren now that are coming through, and as well as, some of you know that I'm a pastor here in the community, and one of the larger African-American churches here in the community, and many of my students or young people from my church are, you know, they attend the Marion City Schools, along with Pastor Peterson, who's already come to the microphone, and just think it's important that I get back into the school system, at least coming to the meetings and finding out what's going on in the community and see where we can help. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. As all of you were speaking, I was reminded of a conference that I went to with Ohio School Boards, oh, many, many years ago, and the topic was, "And when do we start talking about the kids?" And to me, that always stuck with me. So, we're going on to item seven, Agenda Confirmation. Do we have any additions or deletions?
Yeah, I would like to add a couple additions. It's my understanding that we have an interim superintendent, possibly?
Assistant.
Or, sorry, assistant superintendent. So I'd like that to be on the agenda somewhere. So I make a motion to add that. I don't know that the person has started, I don't know that whoever hired the person had the authority to, according to the Board policy we laid out in January, but that's why I would like that to be added.
Veronica, can we put that in the discussions? Someplace we can put that? Or we can talk about it in an executive session? We'll do that in an executive session. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I would also like to add, I don't know where you guys want to put this, but I'd also like to add, I guess I'd like to revisit our email policy. It appears that, you know, I'm kind of taken back as I visit some of the buildings. We have a lack of supplies on some of the teachers rationing. It's the end of the year, so they're trying to get through the school year. But in looking some of the stuff that I requested, I'm kind of surprised that administrators and this Board spent several thousand dollars on the email policy in particular, to see what to do about Mr. Weibling talking to staff members before he actually was quote-unquote officially sworn in. So this has been in the November area. I'd like to discuss what we found out. As far as the email policy, how to deal with an incoming Board member, because apparently we thought, this Board at least thought, it was worth a couple thousand dollars to figure that out with legal counsel. So I'd like to freaking revisit that policy. I mean, this is very irritating that the Board took that action, or the administrators, or a combination thereof, that an incoming Board member was targeted to figure out what to do with him, because he reached out to staff right before he's, I think he took, his own time, Own Energy created a survey that he sent to the staff, so he could hit the ground running, and this Board targeted him, at least went to legal counsel and said, "What do we do with this guy? He's now on the Board." So I'd like to know what we got for a couple thousand dollars as far as the policy on him. So I'd like to have a discussion period as to that.
I agree.
You want to talk about that, Mr. Weibling?
I would, most definitely.
Okay.
When we do it, it's fine. Yeah.
Okay. So then, for the rest of the agenda, can I have a motion?
Well, I'd also have another one. I'd also have, I guess we don't talk about necessarily contracts, but going back through, I know Mrs. Heilmann put in her resignation. I think maybe we may or may not have accepted it. Personally, I think I'd like to make a motion to publicly apologize to the lady, because I looked at her contract, and I don't know how this got by me, but part of her contract, she was given zero years of experience. I don't know if that's because she went from assistant to principal, and then we zeroed her out in experience. But I think that was wrong. She's no longer with us, and I want to publicly apologize to her that I did not catch it. Because some of the contracts I see that are on our agenda have their years of experience and so forth, and I believe their assistants rising up to the level of principal and why they're getting considered experienced, and we gave her a credit of zero, is quite baffling to me. So I personally make a motion.
So why does it have to be a motion? Why can't you just apologize to her?
I can, but I think it should be a formal apology from this Board, quite frankly.
I don't see why there needs to be a motion to apologize for an error.
I can personally apologize for, Ms. Dyer, but I'm asking the Board to apologize for through a motion.
Well, we can all individually go and apologize.
Right. Let me just intervene. I think all of these points you just raised are either, A, personnel matters that are discussed in executive session, and/or attorney-client privilege, if you're raising discussions with attorneys, either by the administration or members of the Board. So those things, I think, have to be discussed in executive session.
I think the public, Ted, as far as the attorney matter, this Board sought out legal services for over $2,000 regarding a policy, and I think this public is entitled to know what we got for $2,000.
First of all, when you say "this Board," the Board only acts through its motions, and it acts as a group in a vote. It's individual Board members or administrators are not this Board. And so I don't know what you're referring to, and not prepared to discuss that.
But anytime I bring up a topic that you guys don't like, you're never prepared to discuss it. But I do know that the President and Vice President of this Board, as well as administrators, met with legal counsel. I don't know who, but we should figure that out, and we should be talking about why we're spending public money to attack an incoming Board member or how to deal with him. That's what we should be talking about. So I mean, if you're okay with spending, or all I've heard tonight is, we care about the kids. We care about the kids, let's get back to the kids. We can't, because you guys waste money on things like administrators that shouldn't be here. We're wasting money on legal services we shouldn't have to do. It's over and over. We have in our legal services, we should address who talks to legal counsel, in my opinion, because we got seven people, according to these, that's able to call up. That's how you run up $25,000 attorney bills in one month. But we're okay doing that. I don't know why.
Well, well, let's.
We talked to, Ms. Veronica has telling us, we're gonna have a windfall. Well, I don't know why. Probably because we run up needless attorney bills.
So in the last three weeks, Mr. Weibling and Mr. Ratliff have asked for a lot of information from the district. Building sign-ins, equity audits, key card swipes at the DSC, the leave forms and balances for DSC employees, Garfield principal invoices, emails, job descriptions, et cetera. And so far, it's cost the district about $2,000 to $3,000 getting all these invoices.
You know what cost us?
No.
Go ahead.
And so what I found out was how much we spend on tampons and Kotex for our girls. That's in one of the invoices. So, you know, you can argue about what we spend our money on all day long, but, you know, I was glad to know that we're handing out free tampons and Kotex to our girls. And so if you want to continue, I mean, 59 pages of building sign-ins. What the heck is that about?
They don't come to the buildings. I guess you don't want to check whether they come.
Well, you know, they don't sign in.
I don't know that they're even here.
Veronica told.
To be honest with you, I don't even know if they show up to work.
They don't swipe in.
I get it.
Administrators do not swipe in. So you had Veronica's staff go through 59 pages of Raptor to find nothing.
Oh, I'm sure there's a lot on there, I just haven't had time to review it. Anytime I ask for stuff, there's stuff on it. It was also for their gas stipend as well.
And 178 pages of invoices, you know, of, you know, again, various expenses for the district. So, you know, we're spending a lot of time on your request to play "I gotcha."
Is that, and I appreciate you thinking that.
Because that is, that is, oh, well, you know, I do feel that way.
I appreciate you thinking that, because as you're saying, you're cutting these "gotcha" moments, you're part of the $2,000 attorney bill. So of course.
There you go.
Of course, you feel that.
Right.
There's your "gotcha" moment. Two grand you just wasted for the district. Congratulations.
There you go.
So, and as far as the $125 stipend, did you meet with Veronica or Dr. Irucci and ask them about the process of the stipend for travel? Did you talk to them about what the pilot program for all of this and mileage and all of that? Do you understand that it is a process? Or maybe, I don't know, Veronica, can you talk to us about the stipend? Or Dr. Irucci, can you?
Yeah, it actually was a conversation about, you know, gas mileage and where we're paying, because we're required to pay travel expenses. When somebody comes to work and they use their own vehicle and they go from one building to the next, then they can record their gas mileage, and that's, that's the law. So we pay it back at the IRS rate. So we decided to implement, which would relieve some of the burden on the Treasurer's Department to keep track of all that, to pay out separate checks and all those kinds of things. We determined that $125 was probably less than what we did, but we would have our folks monitor where they were going, because you still have to keep track of that, because that's then seen as income, and then the Treasurer, at the end of the year, will take the taxes out of that and take additional tax dollars if they haven't shown that that mileage equates to what we pay in the stipends. And so either way, it should come out in the wash. And then that way, we're monitoring it, and if we know we have to reduce that rate or raise it accordingly, then we'll have data to show.
So there has been an analysis of whether or not the $125 is in excess of what the actual travel would be or not?
Mm-hmm.
Or we're gonna start to do that?
We just started that.
But the stipend started when?
No, the monitoring did start in, I think we started this in September.
Was this school year?
Yeah. And yes, there are. I mean, I don't know, I'm gonna ask Mr. Porter, don't you, didn't you guys make up, like, your own method and low booklets and?
I would love to see it.
So, and in the past, too, we, I think we required people to fill out So, and in the past, too, we, I think we required people to fill out a, a form, and then if you filled out a form, then you had to chase the administrator down to sign the form in order to get paid. You might not have gotten paid that particular time or that paid period, but also sometimes I think that because we're in this electronic age, it's easier to, to do it this way. So at the end of the year, you'll do the analysis. And then I, I talked to some administrators who, Jen Lawson didn't even cash, doesn't even cash her sometimes, you know. I talked to another administrator just recently who felt that it was more of a burden, because you gotta, you know, report it to the IRS and make your income and stuff. So I think there's a lot surrounding this whole mileage thing that I think the analysis will prove. Now, how did, how did that come about? Well, you have to talk to people. You have to go and talk to Veronica and talk to Dr. Iarussi about stuff like that, especially if you think it's something that the public, because the public laughed when you guys said it the last time, you know, $125 for this and where are they going, and this for pizzas, and the public laughed. But there's always a backstory. If you're willing to just talk to people and, and get the real, you know, information, the line items. So I would be interested to see Mr. Porter at the end of the year. Dr. I, when are you planning on doing that, that analysis?
Part of our end of the year activities that we do, we meet, you know, as a cabinet on a monthly basis. We'll have an end of year retreat with the principals, what worked, what didn't, and then we'll do some analysis of, you know, we'll look at our test scores, we'll look at expenditures, all, all of those kinds of things.
I'd be interested in seeing that analysis, please.
As would I. And while we're doing this, I'll respond to Mr. Ratliff's comment about targeting, targeting Mr. Wibbling before he was sworn in. For fear of breaching attorney-client privilege, as a lawyer should know this, first, Mr. Wibbling was using school email.
Which was active.
Was not supposed to be, because.
I'm not in charge of that.
You're not, I know that, but you're not, you're not a school employee. Number two, and this is very important, a board member or a board member-elect could be found to have violated an unfair labor practice by directly communicating with members of the staff. I can't do that. You shouldn't do that in an email asking for information from the staff. That's the MEA's prerogative, and that's an unfair, it could be, I'm not saying it is, could be an unfair labor practice. So it made every sense for somebody to inquire of legal counsel whether we should protect Mr. Wibbling and, and, and not have committed an unfair labor practice.
As somebody, I'm just asking, as somebody who hadn't been sworn in yet, I'm not even a member of the board at that time.
That was the issue.
That was the issue. Right.
So, so in the policies, anywhere does it read, "Board member-elect cannot communicate with the staff with an active email account within that district in which he had coached for the previous 10 years."
Wrong issue. It was an issue.
If that's what the $1,600 was spent on, I was ready to call my boss. I'm ready for a race. $1,600, you know, $297 an hour to look into the survey that I wanted to find out, hey, how are things going? But, hmm.
All right.
Yep.
And where is that analysis at? Did you share that analysis with everybody?
The analysis of?
The survey that you?
Yes, absolutely, I did. I did a survey for free. I had 232 respondents among the staff. In fact, I have that right now.
Did you guys see it?
Oh, I was, there was more or less reprimanded.
I just wondered if you did an analysis that's supposed to help our district, and two of the active board members didn't see it. I just wondered. Communication stuff, I guess?
Yep.
Well, I wasn't on the board yet.
Well, you, obviously you're on the board. You sent a survey out.
Yeah.
Okay, so you weren't.
To survey the staff without spending a dime of Marion City School money. Without spending a dime.
I don't, I don't understand it, but.
Order, please.
I can read the results.
So I need approval of the agenda. A motion, please.
So where?
I move the agenda as submitted.
Where are you putting this?
I move approval of the agenda as submitted.
Okay, I second.
We've had our discussion. Any more discussion? Please call the roll.
You're not adding, no, I mean, you're saying as submitted, so we're not going to talk about Mr., the legal counsel issue. We're not going to talk about the superintendent, assistant superintendent. We're not going to talk about, we're not, no one's.
Personnel.
We're going to do the public apology where already that's not, correct?
That's correct. My motion is as submitted.
Yes.
Okay. Also, I would make a motion that we talk about.
Well, we already have one motion on the floor.
I'm adding a motion that we address the 260-day employees' four 10-hour shifts they work in the summer.
That's at the end of the agenda under discussion.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm fine with that.
All right. Do you have a motion?
I'm sorry. I missed who made the motion in the second, for sure. Okay, first, second, okay.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carried. All right. This time, we'll go over to old business. I think we've talked a lot about student behaviors tonight, but Ron, did you have anything more to add?
I just, I know that's a regular item, so we're going to keep it on the agenda. If there's any other questions that I can answer in relation to any of those, I'd be more happy to.
I just wanted to add some things then here. This was an article that was sent to me back in December. It's from Akron Public Schools. I won't read the whole thing. Akron Public Schools teachers say lax discipline practices put them in harm's way. I know we've had some relatively major incidents here in the district, either at elementary or junior high or high school. Just a few excerpts from this. The Akron Education Association, which represents about 2,400 teachers, and again, this is back in December, issued a statement last week sounding the alarm over recent spikes in student violence from guns being brought into school buildings to fights and assaults on teachers. The district is not following the student code of behavior, union president Pat Shipe said, resulting in inconsistent discipline practices and a dangerous environment for teachers. Superintendent Christine Fowler acknowledged an ongoing problem with student behaviors this fall, citing the return to in-person learning from the pandemic after a year in remote learning, and the stresses, traumas, and lack of structure that came with learning from home. Shipe has said the pandemic made an already bad situation even worse. In 2018, the union demonstrated at a school board meeting calling for changes in disciplinary practices. I'll skip over the next part I was about to read. It sounds exactly like an incident that we've heard about at Taft and other schools. Janelle Brown, who's a graduate of Akron Public Schools, said as a graduate, she remembers that being sent for discipline was a significant consequence that students wanted to, there's that word, consequence, that students wanted to avoid, that no longer seems to be the case, she said. Now it's just okay, she says, because they feel nothing's going to happen. Well, I'm just going to get suspended, then they'll put me right back in school. Another teacher, Ally Harding, said the inconsistency is giving students the feeling of a lack of consequences, there's that word again. That can still happen while taking into account everything a student has been through in the last year, or that they endure every day. Now, this, please listen if you haven't. Yes, we want to be trauma-informed. I had a, a staff member gave me the book, what was Teacher's Guide to Trauma, read it front to back, have the notes, the questions, and we talked about the SL, or the SEL in terms of how do we identify those kids. And I know that stuff's coming down, or coming down the pipe. Yes, we want to be trauma-informed and meet our kids where they are, but there's a difference between being trauma-informed and being trauma-enabling. And a kid with trauma needs boundaries desperately. That's Akron Public Schools. It is a city school district, not unlike our own. Most, more recently, May 1st, 2022, an article in our own Marion Star. While many have noted that problems began to worsen before COVID-19 pandemic, the district, speaking of ours, has seen five times the number of expulsion hearings this year when compared to pre-pandemic numbers. What used to be 20 to 30 hearings a year has topped 150 this year. Marion City School Superintendent Dr. Ron Iarussi made the same note with regard to the district's skyrocketing numbers of expulsion hearings and staff efforts to employ restorative practices and conversations within those hearings. We've had those discussions. Quote, "The perception that the district doesn't implement our disciplinary policies now more than ever. We've had to do that, and the data will show you that. A lot of what we try to accomplish on a regular basis is to reduce those. Part of our four pillars is to reduce suspensions, increase attendance rates, and that has been blown completely out of the water in this past year." Last thing before I get to the actual data. There have been, again, from the same article, there have been 604 out-of-school suspensions as well. These numbers are much higher than previous years, district officials explain. Until you go to the Ohio Department of Education and you check the actual data, and I've worked for this district, and we've heard research says, until you bring on your own research, in 2017, 2018, so this is pre-pandemic, we had 76 emergency removals. The following year, 2018, 2019, pre-pandemic, it went up to 171 emergency removals. 2019, 2020, which was cut off early by the pandemic, we had 324 by March. We were on pace for 405. If you look at expulsions, 2017, 18, pre-pandemic, we had 12. 2018, 2019, it jumped to 56 expulsions pre-pandemic. And then 2019 through 2020, this is kind of the outlier, outlier here, we had less than 10 the year COVID hit. So even though we had 324 emergency removals, we had fewer than 10 expulsions, right? The emergency removals for this year were not available, ODE. The expulsions, as we've heard, the district has also released it, we've had 19 expulsions. So 2018, 2019, we had 56 before pandemic. This year, we've had 19, but supposedly it's getting worse. Now, let's specifically get to out-of-school suspensions. In 2017, 2018, there were 686 out-of-school suspensions. The following year, 18 and 19, again, pre-pandemic, it increased 194 up to 880 out-of-school suspensions. That's a 28 and a half percent increase pre-pandemic. The following year, which was the year COVID hit, 2019, 2020, before the school year ended, we had 781 out-of-school suspensions. We were on pace for 976 out-of-school suspensions. That's another 11% increase. This year, during slash post-pandemic, we're down to 604, which barring last year, that is the lowest number on the list. In-school suspensions kind of hovered pretty close. It, it went up and then dropped a little bit this, or the, the year that the COVID hit. So to me, for us to, to make the argument, I've heard teachers say it at the SEL DLT meeting in February, this was happening before COVID. So for us to say that things have gotten worse, yes, every, so many different things have gotten worse. I understand that. So many different facets of, of all of our lives. We've all dealt with it. But the data doesn't support, okay? So for us to say that the, the suspension numbers are significantly higher than they were, that is false. And if you disagree with that, then we submitted the wrong numbers to ODE, as far as I'm concerned, okay? Last thing I want to say here about this topic, this was released on the administrator's update, an email from Mr. Porter. And this, for me, is, and we'll get into the restorative practices more specifically later, the article is entitled Keeping Disruptive Students in the Classroom. And to me, my question is, is the teaching staff aware that this is the kind of support to expect? And I'm just, I'm genuinely asking the question, because if I were the classroom teacher and this is what I was to expect if I had a disciplinary issue, I honestly don't know if I'd be expecting a whole lot. This is a push, so again, this was sent to administrators district-wide. Two different strategies. The push-in, okay? The push-in is an intentional effort, and this is an administrator in terms of how you should handle this, is an intentional effort to show up to a space when a student is in crisis. It calls for spending time with a student in the environment to provide a buffer between a student's fight, flight, or freeze response and the perceived threat. In short, it's working to equitably de-escalate the situation. Fine, we've talked about that, and I see heads nodding already. The goal is for the student to stay in the classroom space or to return to it as, as soon as it's safe. My question is, safe for whom? And the student is then available for learning, which reinforces the concept that even though you struggle, you still belong. I don't think there's a person in this district that wouldn't agree with that statement. But again, we have to also consider the children, the other 24 to 25, maybe it's only 15 or whatever, students that are in that classroom as well, who are doing the right thing, trying to get educated. So that's the push-in strategy. The pull-up strategy. The pull-up follows the initial work, promoting the student's success and recovery and returning to learning after having recentered the emotional, their emotional stability. It's a process that requires authentic face-to-face time when triggering occurs. Most of the time, the situation won't be resolved immediately, and it's not about forcing things to happen, but about reinforcing learning from the incident, validating emotions and experiences, student accountability, I was waiting for that word, and proactive partnerships. The last part I want to read here, the amygdala hijack. The author, again, Matthew J. Bowerman, and again, this is from April 28th, so not too long ago. "I've pushed in from kindergarten through 12th grade, and one thing students have in common is that once they become triggered, they move into an amygdala hijack. The brain perceives a threat, an emotional threat, and the person is unable to rationalize. They crash into freeze, flight, or fight with unwavering conviction. They quickly shut down, look for an escape, or go fists up, ready for battle. They need space. They need to be heard. They deserve to be understood. And it's up to administrators, teachers, and school staff to be present in those moments and to find authentic ways to reach them and to validate their emotions." Most of that, okay, I can see if you're of that train of thought, but to validate those emotions, yes, what you've experienced, fine. At the SEL DLT meeting, somebody help me, Social Emotional Learning District Leadership Team, in February, February 7th, I believe, and if you'll believe, I sat there for about 35, 45 minutes with my mouth shut, just to listen, okay? And then it became very clear to me that the restorative practices, which I was a part of at JDC, that was one of the things we discussed at the meeting, with the, the people from downtown, the, the judges and prosecutors represented. I was in JDC. My wife and I had published a book. We had even got a grant for this. It's restorative practices, okay? That was the side of it in terms of helping these kids to understand the decisions they made, okay? I would go two, sometimes three, mostly one or two times a month, okay? And you would see the benefits, but you also have to realize, those kids were in JDC. They were also negative consequences they had to deal with. Do you want them to have to deal with that? Absolutely not, but that's a reality. I still see many of those kids, whether they'd stop in at the car wash, or they're working in a fast-food restaurant, like, hey, I remember you, big smile on their faces. So the impact was there. But you can't just get rid of the discipline. You can't just get rid of the consequences. You can't just get rid of the accountability, okay? We have to get back, and, and, Ms. Dyer, I love that you're asking the questions. What are the solutions, okay? I love, because otherwise, we're just sitting up here talking, okay? I think we have the solutions building, and yes, there are certain things, as Ms. McKay mentioned, that we can't do. I understand that. But we have to start going to bat for the other kids, the 95% of our kids who are doing the right thing, the teachers who are doing the right thing. We have to enforce the disciplinary policies. So when we talk about student behaviors, I just wanted to make the board aware that this is the kind of stuff that, that our principals are being recommended to do. And I, honestly, I need proof. Show me that this works, and show me that, that the kids who are witnessing these traumatic, or that they're not traumatized. How many parents and family members that we had come up here? My kids are traumatized now. We need a common sense approach to, and I've said it for way too long, but it was on the agenda this month, so I figured I'd address it, so.
So, and I agree. And earlier, I mentioned PBIS, which is positive behavior. So each school, I'm reading hazes, like, right now. I looked at Taft's the other day, and so those kids are, I worked at Grant with Mr. Saban, and they had.
The mentoring program, correct?
Yes.
Or is that separate?
But I was in the building when he did two PBIS. I'm going to reward those kids, you know, whether it's academic or attendance or whatever. And, you know, just like you have that data there that reflects Akron, or, you know, I was at a, a seminar last week where a lot of districts are suffering from this very same thing. A lot of districts are, are striving to find a solution.
To?
To discipline or pre-pandemic or whatever. But say what you might about restorative practice. Restorative practices, because just like you have data, I have research too.
I've got restorative practice stuff later, because it's on the agenda, too.
Right, but you, you mentioned it. So restorative practices strengthen students' connections with staff and peers. It is a preventative and responsive in its approach. It focuses on building com- It focuses on building community within the classroom, school, and the community. So when things happen, these kids circle up. This lays the groundwork for when there are issues between students or students and staff to be able to repair relationships that have been broken. It also allows a voice for those that are typically not heard. I'm going to repeat that. It also allows a voice for those who are typically not heard. For example, other students in the classroom who may witness an incident to express how the incident made them feel and what they need from their peers to be okay. It builds empathy as students hear from how their actions affected others. And it has students own up to their actions as opposed to just escaping them. It's not necessarily discipline, nor does it replace it. The goal is to repair what has been broken. I think Mr. Peterson was talking about that when he got up. The skills that our students learn through these practices are skills that will help them in their inner actions through adulthood. There's a script of restorative questions that allow staff to ask questions without putting students on the defensive and to get how their actions impacted someone else and what needs to be done to fix it. When implemented, restorative practices help to reduce out all the school discipline, promote interconnectedness and well-being within our students and staff. So when we get an opportunity to build community within the classroom, those students that you're talking about that don't have a voice or whatever, the training that we want our teachers to take to implement these restorative practices, those stories that you're hearing, they're happening everywhere. We need to determine what can we do here in Marion. You guys have been asking, Dr. Irucci, what are you doing? He's saying, I'm going to do some trainings, we're going to do this. Teachers need something in their toolkit to immediately address those problems. So, I mean, to me, you know, that's what we're trying to build.
When I spoke up at the meeting in February, the reason I did after 45 minutes was it was very clear, and that's why I said, so let me get this straight. We are talking restorative practices, and I don't want to disappoint here, but the consensus was, we are not, I couldn't believe it. We are not setting aside time for the restorative practices between the teachers and the students, those meetings to take play, hold on one second, for those to take place. And then that was, they said, we will make that a priority. I said, well, we better, because you can't, if you don't have the conversation, you can't really call. Everything you said, I agree with 100%, literally 100%. But if we don't set aside time to have, to allow those conversations to happen between the people whose relationship needs restored, then we're wasting money.
You know, it happens.
Been in a classroom?
Yeah.
I used to interview every single one of my kids for five minutes. I spent the entire first week talking to every single one.
I mean, you guys, we
I've got four of them.
I mean, talking to, anyways, I can go on, but I will be doing, as you say, talking to teachers because I don't want teachers hit, bit, kicked, or whatever. But I think when we're asking for a solution, we talked about that at the beginning of the meeting. PBIS, you know, PACS, you know, some people are doing Leader and Me, restorative practice, you know, training, 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 you know, and that's what's going to get it.
And Taft asked for that.
They got to create that culture. No, you're not going to carve time away and say, oh, it's restorative practice time. It happens spontaneously when there is a behavior that needs to be discussed.
I can't disagree, and that's, that honestly is upon the teacher to create those relationships. But in terms of, hey, if a kid gets suspended, we do need, well, there must be a restorative, there's got, what do they call it, the conversation, I don't know.
It's restorative circles.
Just restorative circles. That's what they were saying, we haven't set aside time for restorative circles. So I agree 100% relationship should start, that's day one stuff.
Right, that's Ed to climate data as well. So, but anyways, I'm new and I'm not trying to get kicked off because I barely got on, so.
Are we, Dr. Irucci, are we, are we doing the, are we moving towards doing de-escalation?
Yes.
Okay. So that in and out stuff potentially will happen on the smaller behaviors?
I mean, I can, you know, and I read the article, and I know some folks over from Akron as well deal with the same thing, friends I know in Youngstown who are dealing with the same thing. I mean, it's obvious that those behaviors are happening. I guess, you know, I think there's a perception out there sometimes too that restorative practices are in lieu of discipline, which I don't think it's part of that. You know, if you can build those relationships and those types of things from the beginning, and I know our teachers try like heck to build as many relationships as they can. And this is, you know, taken, a lot of these things have taken us in a different direction. But, you know, yeah, we're going to, you know, work with de-escalation. We're going to provide training. We have, you know, hopefully on the agenda tonight, there's a contract to provide more restorative practices from some really good folks. And we're actually offering stipends in the summer for our teachers to come to that. If we can't, we're making that a priority in the fall. In those four days that we have available, there's going to be de-escalation, restorative practices, and implicit bias. Those are the three things that we talked that we needed to do.
And is Taft, is Taft doing restorative practice, their principals here?
I think we got, I mean, I don't want to put them on the spot, but I, you know, I got great feedback.
Put them on the spot.
And it's open to the staff that's not required, or it's open to them?
And what are those dates? June 13th?
June 14th. That's the one that's district-wide.
But I guess my problem is this. If a kid acts out, according to the article that's been sent to administration, they're supposed to keep the kid there, talk to him. Ms. Dyer's saying it gives a voice to everybody else that witnessed it. So if the teacher's there talking to this kid, then he's, the teacher eventually addresses, how's that make everybody feel? The time we do all that, when's the learning happening?
Rocky, I tell you.
I mean, I just don't know how you expect all the teachers to keep addressing every behavioral issue. I mean, we're going to have to have, I guess if it's a small behavioral issue, I get it. And maybe that's where the de-escalation with major behavioral issues, I guess I don't, those aren't fully set up yet, and I understand it if it's, you know, talking out of turn or something smaller, or, you know, maybe a small blow up. But if it's major, I don't, I don't see how we can keep kids in classrooms.
When you build community, you've got to build community within your classroom.
But then you, you're assuming then, if you just have to build community, that these teachers haven't done that. I would assume that the teachers out here have already built a community within their classroom. They're still having the behavioral problems and still being assaulted.
I think teachers have a lot of autonomy to do a lot of different things in the classroom. And that depends on the individual teacher. I mean, there are some teachers who are, you know, more old school that have good relationships with their kids. There are some teachers that are more relaxed in some of those things and still have good relationships with those kids. And we don't, we typically don't try to come in, we try to give the teachers tools to put in their toolbox. Like PACS, I know we can argue about PACS all day, but again, that was the intention was to help create self-awareness for some of our teachers to use. And some of the teachers that use it and implement it with fidelity are really seeing some good results. But it might not fit another teacher. And we've never come down and said, you must do PACS, you must do this, because we try to give some of that autonomy. Maybe that's where we're missing the boat. Maybe we need to go, this is the things that we're going to do in the classroom, and we're going to do it this way. You know, I have a meeting coming up with the secondary principals, and we're going to talk about the code of conduct. And I'll just go back and tell you, I was a high school principal for four years in a very similar situation. You know, there was, we had a code of conduct. You did this, you got that. But, you know, on that other end, there was also that restorative piece there too, that I think for a lot of years, we missed. And that's, we don't want to keep our kids out. If that's what we want, I'm not your guy. You know what I mean? I'll say all day, we want to keep our kids in the classroom as much as possible.
I get it, but it goes back to a kid that blows up or does whatever. He doesn't ever have to leave the classroom, is sending a message that everybody can blow up and nothing happens. That's the message it sends.
I don't disagree with that at all. I don't, you know, we had an incident today. And again, you know, we could talk about special need students and those kinds of things. And, you know, we had a student that showed some violent behavior that we got out and probably is not going to come back, but we have to go through that same process. And sometimes we're limited in those kinds of things. It's not as easy as just saying, remove that student without, you know, having to go through due process for that student. So that's where we have to find out. I mean, we, again, and I don't know what the difference is in those, I think the times we look at the number of suspensions as far as who's suspended, I can tell you this. I know that kids are being suspended for a lot longer time for their violent behaviors than they've been since I've been here. Maybe that's something we need to research. But, you know, I've seen more 10 pendings this year than I have since I've been here. So that's, again, I just
It's a problem.
Yeah, it is a problem. And again, I, you know, I know that there's a lot of staff members and those that come up and speak, they, you know, they care about, they care about the kids, but they want to be, they want to feel safe in the classroom.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not, you know, I care about those teachers too, but I care about those kids, all of them, every single one of them that walks through that door. I don't want to have an incident like what happened in Northeast Ohio two weeks ago. A seventh grader in the middle of school. We don't want anything like that here in Marion. And again, we got to do everything we can for our kids, and in the same time, we need to support the teachers in what they're doing, but we got to do that together.
Thank you. We're going to go on to new business line items. This is the final reading and approval of board policies. You'll see them there. There's several new staff dress and grooming. Revised college credit plus program. Revised blended learning, yes, I cannot see this very well. Revised dress code and grooming, revised weapons, grant funds, cost principal spending for federal funds, procurement, use of credit cards, weapons, and food services, and everything was attached. We need to have a motion, right?
Yes, we're at the point where we need a motion.
Please have a motion.
So move.
Second, I'll second. All right, discussion.
I just have, the staff dress and grooming, and I agree with every single thing on here. I hope it translates to the student dress and grooming as well. So the Board of Education believes administrators set an example in dress and grooming for their students and other district employees to follow, which implies
There's a revised dress and grooming.
My concern is not that we have, but that it gets enforced, okay? To make sure that the policy is not just on paper, but the policy is truly enforced and that the student dress and grooming is adhered to. So I'm just, I want to be on record saying that.
You know, for me, the dress and grooming as students, quite frankly, I think this is a cop-out by us as a board. I'm not, I'm fine with putting this on there now, but we need to revisit how our students dress because it's very inappropriately done most of the time. And why I think it's a cop-out is because the board really doesn't establish anything. We're just saying, Mr. Irucci, go establish something, which then puts him at the, okay, now I have to establish some reasonable dress code for students. I don't think we're in a position necessarily to, I mean, maybe we should have a, some type of committee with even some high school students on it, parents and stuff like that, to tell us what is appropriate attire. But just saying we're authorizing the superintendent to establish a reasonable dress code really is not having a policy at all. I mean.
Maybe what you're missing there is there is an administrative guideline. That is, we don't adopt the guidelines, we only adopt the general policy. Dr. Irucci, administrative staff has the, and so if you want to look at that, you'll see specifics as to some of the, and then look again at the handbook.
Can I kind of speak to this a little bit? Because I know this has been a question with the student dress and grooming. I mean, typically, our policies right here, the general guidelines, is that we promote safety. And then there's other things that go into a student dress code, which is a little bit different than the policy. And that comes out of the student handbook as far as the code of conduct. So our policy is basically said that we promote, you know, safety and that we will not, I think that, from what I understand in from Neola, the crux of the change in this policy is to make sure it's not discriminatory or anything along those lines. To make sure that
I understand that, but it doesn't have to be that way. We're choosing it to do it that way.
Yeah, I'm just, this, yeah, no, I get it.
This is the recommendation from Neola. There's also the other student handbook. To me, I think we should be able to look at our policies and say, I don't have to look anywhere else under dress and grooming, here's the policy. That's just my personal preference. I don't think this lays anything out. I think it really puts it on you to establish a board policy, which I think is incorrectly how it should be. And quite frankly, a cop-out on, we know some of the students' dresses is, you know, suspect.
The board approves the handbook.
It does, but here's the thing. So here's the thing about policy too. When Neola makes these recommendations for us and we go through and we do that, all these are vetted policies then. So any change that you make to what has been a recommended vetted policy, we have to also vet for insurance purposes and all those kinds of things. We're required to do that. So, I mean, everybody in the country now uses some form of policymakers to be able to, that's part of their service that they provide, that all of these policies that are recommended have been vetted. So again, that's what the recommendation is. You can, if you're going to make a local policy that is different from, and making sure that it is aligned with all of, all of the titles, whatever.
But we already have that, because you're telling me it's in the student handbook. So whether it's in the student handbook or right here on this, it would be no different.
Yeah, I mean, our, again, our student handbook is subject to board approval.
I get it.
But that's part of kind of almost what, like Ted said, fits in the administrative guidelines, part of that. This is policy that has been recommended by your policy creators, which are a team of
Yeah, because the policy creators from wherever these people are, are not going to come into Marion City and say, here's what's approved. Tank tops are, this isn't. They're not going to do that. That's our job, but we're not, we're just basically handing it off to you in the same
It's not our job. We're a policy-setting board. We don't administer the details of how short the skirt should be, what should be on the T-shirt.
That would be in the policy, Ted.
These guys have to face that every day. We set the policy, and it's a safety policy, it's a general policy that allows that.
I disagree. We set the policy, he manages what we set. I get it. So you don't want to put in here how short the skirt should be, or whether we have, you know, tube tops or whatever, I mean, or we have leggings or whatever. You're fine just handing it off to him and we put it in some thing that we might authorize later. I'm saying it should be in here, so everybody's pretty clear. I can look up Marion City Schools dress and grooming, and I can find how you're supposed to dress and groom. I don't have to look at another material to find out how you're supposed to dress and groom.
Well, you find that in student handbook.
I do not believe you should have a dress and grooming policy that just says, the board authorized the superintendent to establish a reasonable dress code. You think that's a good, you think that's a good policy? How's he manage with, I just, we just give him to establish it? How is that a policy?
Student handbook.
We Can I interject here? Because I've been doing this for a while, and things have changed in relation to that too. Because the dress code is subject, again, to all kinds of different laws. And what is appropriate for somebody and who determines that is always under question. There's tons of case laws, I'm sure you guys know, in relation to student dress and grooming. And policies have become almost a fact where it says, your policy, your policy itself says you got to be safe.
And it wouldn't matter, Dr. Irucci, if it's in your student handbook or here. If we get sued on a policy, meaning in the handbook or here, it's the same lawsuit. This could say, we established it, and they pull out the handbook and say, hey, you violated the law. I mean, it's the same thing.
I'm just going to use this for example. I mean, we could, there's nothing to stop our policy committee, you know, from saying, you know, we're not, I hate to say this, but it's a topic, if it has to do with, you know, whatever, transgender grooming or something along those lines. And there are those policies that have been acted by boards that have been not vetted, and they're then subject to not being insured. And then if somebody does file a claim against you, then you're at risk by yourself and the district because that policy wasn't vetted. And again, that's something I think that we have to have a discussion on. I don't think it's just that simple to say, put a committee together, get your dress code, implement it, and that's what it is.
Well, somebody came up with the one we have now. So it had to be simple somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, we've had to revise.
We had one, so we were able to do it. And when you start saying, policy committees, I mean
It's a handbook committee.
Yeah, so we have, we have stuff in place, but those are not board committees. Those are your advisory committees, okay? So everything's running through you, and this allows it to run through you. I'm saying I think the board should establish what we think is an appropriate dress code. That's, that's just my, I'm, if that's, you don't think the board should establish a dress code?
I'm not doing that again.
Again, because I'm looking at
20 years ago.
Kids who come to school just barely in clothes, that may have been their sister's clothes or whatever. I'm looking at trans kids who want to identify, which this protects, Title IX and VIII or whatever. I don't want to tell a parent I don't want to tell a parent, you know, and sometimes girls may go out of the house with one thing, and, you know, once they get to school, they're changing into another, then we've got it on the principals, because I remember a time when principals were sending kids. So, you're talking about seeing our numbers spike for expulsions and, and stuff. I don't want to have to dictate. If, we may as well go to uniforms.
Okay, so you, maybe. If, if, if your, if your policy is, we can let the kids wear whatever they want.
Because times are changing.
Times are, the, the problem is, we're here, we're here to set kids up when they turn eighteen to go out into the world. And going out into the world is not wearing cat ears and being a cat. I, I'm sorry, it's not.
I disagree.
Going out into the world is just not coming in with hardly anything on.
So, what about those four-up pants that the kids are wearing? Is that?
I mean, we'd have to discuss stuff like that, but you don't want to discuss it.
I'm not.
You just want to not do anything.
I don't think, I don't want to tell a kid how to dress to come, I want a kid in school.
Well, I want a kid to be respectful and be here to learn, and not be here to do whatever, and roll out of bed and not have any pride and take any pride in any appearances whatsoever, because that doesn't cut it in the real world.
Well, maybe that's right to them.
Go ahead.
Some kids, I mean, come on, they, they can't afford to look professionally groomed when they come to school, and we're gonna, what, just like, send them home? I mean, the whole point of this, going to school, is going to school. And now you're gonna put more barriers up in front of them.
No, I'm not putting any barriers. I'm putting responsibilities on kids that grow up to have responsibilities, that's what I'm putting on kids.
You know, I mean, we-
If you don't want to have kids that have responsibilities, I see where this board's at. I, I'm clear.
That's good.
Is that a gotcha moment too?
I don't know what it is.
This is why I brought up both of them. For the staff and dress, it's an administrator who understands this precept and adheres to its, and, and, and adheres to it, enlarges the importance of his or her task, presents an image of dignity, and encourages respect for authority. These factors act in a positive manner towards the maintenance of discipline. Well, it was somebody at church who said, hey, have you heard about, is it, is it guys in ties or boys in ties or something like that? And it's a huge push, and it's, it's being made in, in prosperous communities as well, you know, and that's-
We, we did that. Johnny Jackson did that.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, and for special occasions, like funerals, you know, but like, I, I just feel, for me, there was a time when principals would take a measuring stick-
Yep.
And they would measure how short a girl's skirt was, but they did not do anything to males, when males were wearing different things. There was a time when teachers could not wear jeans unless it was dressed down, you know? I just think it's, this particular policy to me says that we're going to affirm a student's right to dress according to the gender that they identify with. We are reserving, I mean, we are affirming their ability to come to school and be dressed in a way that will help them to learn. I, I don't want to put that responsibility, they were in Carol B. Val's office all the time.
Carol handled it, no?
Yeah, so, yeah, she handled it, but extra clothes in the clothing locker or whatever. I just think we have bigger fish to fry than looking at dress and, and grooming. I think we need to affirm a student's responsibility, and if I'm their mother, I'm gonna make sure that they're dressed appropriately, you know? So, there we go again, putting it back on, on, to the parent's responsibility. So, I mean, I don't think that, I like this policy. It's not that, I don't think we shouldn't have something as a guideline, but I feel that when we go back to the days where we're looking at boys' bangs, or, and they gotta have haircuts, you know, above their ears and all that, I think that's where we're gonna be headed by, if we implement a dress code like that, so stringent.
It will never be right for somebody. So, we have a motion and a second.
Yes.
And we've had discussion, so, call the roll, please.
Are you voting all these together?
Is this for all of them, or?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
No.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carried. Purchasing agent. It is recommended that Dr. Irucci is appointed purchasing agent effective today due to resignation of the current purchasing agent. But motion.
So, I'll, I'll, yeah, I'll motion for that. And this is because Ms. Lawson-
Yep.
That was her job, responsibilities.
Yep, okay.
Do you need a second still? Second?
All right, discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. On item ten, final forms. This is for the amount of $2,633.31. Superintendent recommends the approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and Meta for final forms for fiscal year twenty-three. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion.
Dr. Irucci, do you know if, district-wide, if we implemented this, how much the cost will be? Because I know final forms are emergency medical forms usually used in sports, but a coach can pull it up immediately-
Right.
-on an app or something versus getting in papers and files and stuff. I don't know what it would be, but if-
I can find that.
Yeah, I would like to, I mean, quite honestly, I'd like this to be district-wide, that teachers would have this access at their fingertips.
Are there other districts that use it?
Yeah.
We're only using it in athletics, but we're talking about, uh, parent information form, how to get ahold of parents and-
I think of the youth and government trip, we took every single senior downtown, so we had to go to the office and pull every single emergency medical card, that would solve that.
That's what we have to do online.
I think, isn't it already online?
I'm pretty sure the enrollment, and I'll have to, I'll, I'll have to check again, but I think the enrollment process uses final forms, and that's where we try to get most of those emergency medical things. I know we use final forms too for notifications, I'm looking over at the athletic director there too, but-
It's in Power School.
It is in Power School?
I know it's part of the process in Power School, but we have to work with the city to follow that.
Because I think this would be good for teachers and administrators to have at their fingertips if needed, because we're talking, obviously, if you're accessing it, it's usually because there's an emergency and I need to get ahold of someone now.
Right. All righty. We have a motion and a second. Veronica, call the roll, please.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Well, he can service, services OT, PT, this is in the amount of sixty-seven thirty-two, and that is per hour, and it's out of the general fund. The superintendent recommends approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and Mohegan Rehabilitation Services LLC to provide OT and PT services for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item C, Sunday System Training Reading Intervention, cost of $6,000 through IDEA Title VI. Superintendent recommends approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and Sunday System Training LLC to provide training for the new reading intervention program at Grant Middle School for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion?
Second.
All right, discussion. All right, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item D-
One second, Madam President. On that Mohegan one that we approved, under this, it says twenty-two to twenty-three, wasn't that a three-year? Do we know?
It is a three-year.
It is, right?
So, it needs to be adjusted here?
On our thing, it says the twenty-two to twenty-three, I think there's, it becomes effective August first, twenty-two, shall contend, it's paragraph eleven, it shall continue in effect for three years from such date. So, I don't want the public or us to think we just passed a, one year when the actual contract had three.
It was in item what?
It was, it's eleven on this, if, if anyone wants to look at it.
Yes, it's a continuum.
It says a-
Did I hear Jen say that's correct? Okay, so we need to go back and rescind that motion?
I think we just amended, make a notice that, we, we all noticed it's a three-year motion, or a three-year contract, it's ever one year.
Okay. Veronica, do we need to have another?
I, I fixed it.
Pardon? You erased it. Okay, thank you. Pointing that out.
No one has any objection, it would be in three, right?
Uh-uh. Thank you for pointing that out.
Yep, no problem.
All right, we're at item D, the Sunday System Reading Intervention. This is for twenty-two thousand. It is a CLSD grant. Superintendent recommends the approval of an agreement between MCS and Windsor Learning for the purchase of Sunday and System, a reading intervention program for Grant Middle School. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
This is for just grant, right?
Yes. It's just for intervention specialists to use as a tier-two intervention for them. They went through the whole process of, the intervention specialist picked this, they looked at three, I believe, three different before they chose it.
Okay, but it, I just clarified, this is grants intervention.
Yeah.
Yep. Awesome. Okay, Veronica, call the roll, please.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Curriculum Associates, item E, one hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred, excuse me, one hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars. These is paid for with ESAR funds. Superintendent recommends approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and Curriculum Associates for the following iReady teacher toolbox for all elementary buildings, iReady assessment, personalized instruction, and teacher toolbox for Grant Middle School. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second? I'll second.
Second, okay.
Discussion.
Yeah, Dr. Irucci, this is for two years, right? On my quote, I think it's a two-year purchase?
I believe so.
Yeah.
These typically are two years.
And it's for-
This is for iReady for the middle school, and we're transitioning in math and language arts from NWEA MAP to iReady, and-
But, but I also see that it's a, do you know why it says pilot quote at the top? Because we're already using iReady in a lot of schools, right?
Well, we are, the toolbox.
The pilot is for toolbox. So, that's what they call it when they give it to you. They just give it to you for free.
So, we're adding a tool, we, we're already using iReady, we're adding a toolbox.
We, we, yeah, well, we, we used iReady at the, at the elementary school, we did not use the toolbox, so, but we're adding iReady to the middle school in replace of NWEA, which would also include the toolbox in this purchase here.
We didn't pay for the toolbox this year, they gave the pilot for the first year of elementary, so they give that to you in the first year of the contract.
What, okay, what, I mean, I see that we're using it in math, reading, and writing, right? Why do we need it in reading and writing if we just had CKLA?
This is for grant, right?
It's for grant.
This is for Benjamin Harrison, Garfield, George Washington?
That's the standard stuff that we're already using. So, would it be a smoother transition?
Hayes, McKinley, Taft.
So, yeah, that's-
Oh, the teachers, I'm sorry, my bad. The teacher toolbox is for grants. I'm sorry. So, we are, this is the whole iReady contract, again, for what we're using in the elementary, we're adding it at grant, and that's what it is. So, iReady is our diagnostic assessments that go along, they also serve as our gifted screeners, those kinds of things, it's part of high-quality student data as well, which is a vendor-approved by ODE. So, it's not really, I mean, there are assessments built into CKLA.
It's different. It's a different tool, is what you're telling me?
It is.
It's to assess them, okay?
It's a diagnostic.
And it's a two-year deal for all those schools that I mentioned?
Yes.
Yep.
And then, are you, for this tool, toolbox for grant, is it because it's a smoother transition and kids are-
No, we just, our teachers experimented with the toolbox and really found some really good things in there, so we just decided to, to try that with them too.
All right. All right, Veronica, call the roll, please.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item F, American Red Cross, there is no fiscal impact. Budget source ECE funds and general funds. The superintendent recommends approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and American Red Cross to allow our trained nurses to teach CPR for twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Do I have a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion.
Who, who are we training on this?
Our nurses.
This is our nurses-
Our nurses.
So that they can train our folks as well. So, our nurses, like a train-the-trainer type things, I believe?
So, this actual contract is for how a nurse is training a frequent teacher of physical education.
Gotcha. All right. Veronica, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?[1565.36]
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Explorer Learning Gizmos. Dollar amount, seven thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-five cents. This is paid for through ESAR funds. The superintendent recommends approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and Explorer Learning for Gizmos online software and training for the middle school and high school science departments. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I guess this gets back to the, in terms of the fiscal year for twenty-twenty-five. Just, I guess, for the teachers, you know, I know piloting is quite the word around here now, but to keep in mind, hey, are we, keep an eye out long-term, is this something we want to hold on to or not? And I think if we approach the implementation of a new program in that manner, to have the entire staff district-wide to also be having their eyes out, hey, is this fiscally responsible for us to maintain this program or not? I just think that's something that we, as a board, should promote. Any programs that we do approve, that, hey, teachers, is this something you'd want to keep, knowing full well that we're not going to be able to keep everything in just a few years?
Correct. Okay.
But this is for a one-day training for twenty-five people? Is that correct?
That's software?
For Gizmos, it's a onsite training.
These are licenses?
It's for the whole year, it's for the entire year. So our science department, middle school and high school will use this for six or seven, maybe even more.
Then maybe it includes a one-day training with the twelve-year-
Yeah, it includes the one-day training beginning of the year.
Yeah.
We know we're going to have new staff, so then there is training.
How, how long have we been using this?
At least like six or seven years. It's a supplemental resource for the teachers and students to do an active experiment.
Why, why are we only doing then a one-year deal? Our savings, obviously, I'm seeing a two and three, if we've used this for however many years, why are we not asking for a three-year deal that saves us twenty-three hundred dollars if you're going to come back to us next year asking for the same program?
This is one of the conversations, so we actually do, I work with the department chairs and we looked at this contract together, we reviewed the usage from our teachers as well, and so that was a decision made together as a group, and the teachers are involved with that. So, for the next year, that's what you could use, we will revisit it each year.
Well, yeah, I, here's my problem, I understand the teachers make decisions as far as what they would like, and I understand we're in charge of ultimately approving and having to approve bills for decisions. My question, I guess, you're telling me we want to review it every year because we might change something, but yet we've had the same thing for a number of years. Why are we not tying in to save this district twenty-three hundred dollars instead of costing us, you'll come back next year and ask for it, and next year, because that's been the pattern for, as you said, a number of years? So my question is, why are we not trying to do the three-year deal and save the district twenty-three hundred dollars?
I think definitely we can revisit that, I'm not sure, again, those department leads-
Is it able-
The department heads have those conversations.
Yeah, my question is, are we able to table this to try to come back and vote and save the money if they want it? Now, if they're saying, hey, we might go a different direction next year, I get it, but she's saying we've done it every year for, I don't know how many, she said ten?
Six or seven years.
Seven. So if they're liking it that much, I want to save as much money as we can, because it's giving them the program. We got the money right now, it'd be three years that we don't have to worry, we saved twenty-three hundred?
But if they say next year they don't want it, then we've actually lost several thousand dollars.
I get it, but they've used it for-
One of the things we've tried to do is, is look at all these contracts and things that we've been using, and again, I think we're at the point now where, you know, we want to evaluate them based on their effectiveness, too, and I don't know, you know, there might be teachers, some teachers that are seeing some success and some not, but, and I don't, and that might be why we don't want to get into a multi-year agreement. But we can pull it, have them-
Yeah, we table it just for a month and ask the teacher-
Are you said just supposed to was hit or miss this year? And so that was one of the things we talked about, maybe one year, providing the training and seeing if we're actually going to use it. So, that was, that was one of the conversations that we had, and that's why the training's on, if everybody's trained in it, knows how to use it, not just the program that's there that, you know, could be used, if nobody's been trained in how to use it. So, that was, that's why I did the recommendation for one year, I'm happy to do.
Were they aware, did they, did the teachers-
Either way, it's fine.
Did they get the same data that we're looking at right now? Did they see that, hey, you could get savings if we get this for two or three years? Were they made aware of the same information or not? I'm asking.
I don't, I don't.
Okay, I just- When you're talking about-
We have to put up a time, we were going through their usage data at-
Yeah, I'd be comfortable with you having to table it for a month and see what they want for a year.
I mean, that's like one-eighth of the cost, roughly, I mean, that's a big savings on a small program, I mean.
But she said they, they hit and missed using it.
Yeah, if they're not going to use it, I don't want to go three-year deal, I'm just,
that's what she was going-
I'm asking if we can ask the teachers if they're going to use it or not, because we would like to go more long-term and save money.
If they want it, yeah.
Lisa, did you, didn't you guys ask the teachers on this analysis, or just the department leads, or what?
I was the department lead, and they work with their teams on their usage. So they go back, their responsibility to go back, talk to their teams, and then they bring it back to our monthly department, like, and scale.
And they said it was like hit or miss, and you're thinking that it's just best to do it for this year, and perhaps not next?
Based on the uses, we have quarterly meetings this year with just the department leads, six as well, and that was our recommendation, based on us as a team reviewing the data.
Because I've seen materials, like, just sit on shelves, you know, with people not utilizing them, and we purchase stuff, so I'd like to err on the side of caution.
I mean-
I think the important one for this, so a lot of software companies are different, too, like, you can either pay per teacher, or you have to pay per student, this was not one that we could do per teacher. So it was hard to just pull it off the table for the teachers that weren't using it, so that's another reason that goes into kind of the decision for this one. So, if you look, there are two thousand students for this one, so we have to go by student, we can't just go by teacher license.
Gotcha.
But then that gets back to-
So we, we can push this for a month and then revisit it and put it back on the-
Yeah, I mean, it's for the school year, so it's-
Yeah.
It's planned by August.
Do we need a motion for that, or?
I mean, I just don't like spending, I mean, the other thing, I don't like spending eight grand for hit or miss. I don't know what that means, but hopefully we can, you guys can revisit it and-
I think we can table it.
Table it and get back with it, because I'd like to save the money if at all possible.
All right.
I'll withdraw my motion, if that's the pleasure of the board. Thanks, Ted.
Okay. All right, so we're going to vote to table it? So the motion is to table?
Don't need a table.
We don't need a motion?
No.
Okay. Okay, all right, so that motion is tabled for next month. Item H, IIRP Restorative Practice Training. This is twenty thousand, six hundred and one dollars, paid for through McKinney Vento Grant. The superintendent recommends approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and IIRP Graduate School to provide restorative services training for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
I'm just not sold on it. Whether it's implementation or if it really works, I don't think that the verdict is out yet. I'm open to being convinced, and we can share the information. I want to, again, I took part in it.
You were trained, you trained?
Not necessarily trained, the grant that we got for JDEI that allowed me to go in there was part, I can't, it's a four-letter acronym like everything else, that made that possible. JDEI or something, I don't, whatever it was.
JDEI.
There it is, yes, so, again, part of me supports it, but I need to know that we, as a district, our training, everybody talks about fidelity, and we got to implement it correctly, and I'm not there right now, I don't have the faith and the trust that we're doing it well enough, okay? So I just want everybody to know why I'm going to vote.
You know, Dr. Ivese, this calls, who's being trained, I guess?
It's on there. Ninety teachers?
It's what?
It just says ninety quantity, who is that that's going to be trained?
That's open up to anybody in the district who wants training for restorative practices, primarily geared toward teachers.
But I mean, is it required training? We talking voluntary training? I mean, what are we, I guess that's what?
I think we did an interest survey for that, for this, before we entered into the contract, so we have twenty-six, twenty-seven? Thirty.
So we have thirty?
It just went out.
Just went out, though, too.
I'd like to sneak into those, those ones I can.
Again, who are we trying to train? Anybody in the district that's wanting to come? Or are we targeting elementary stu, teachers?
Restorative practices for any teacher in the district. And we're offering stipend and credit for that as well, to encourage our staff members to come.
Now, is that the same one that Taff is doing?
Yeah. What do you, I think Kathy, yes, it is the same one, okay.
What do you mean stipend? So this isn't-
Teachers get paid to come to that, too.
And we don't have those numbers, what it's going to cost us for ninety teachers to come?
That's the cost of the training, we have to, it's our job to charge.
No, I, I get it, we don't have those numbers yet on what that is, right?
Right.
Nope.
And is that from McKinney Vento, too?
Yes.
Yes, it is paid for through McKinney Vento.
Couldn't, I mean, this is possible, that we could train all of our teachers in a PD day beginning of the year on this.
We can train one forty-five people at one time.
We got four days of training.
Two-day training.
But we do other PDs throughout the year, right?
Yeah. I mean, hopefully we get some good feedback, and then we bring them back for two days in professional-
I get it, I just don't see the spending, the cost of having teachers come in, giving them, hopefully giving them money to come in, begging them to come back to do it, when we got PD days anyway. If we're going on this restorative practice measure, we need to go all-in and go restorative practice and make them train in restorative practice, this is what we're going to do. But not having some of them trained in restorative practicing and not, you know what I mean? If you're taking us down this path, which I'm not saying is the wrong path, I'm just saying, let's go down the path, and we'll figure it out, I'm just, you know, this is going to be-
We can get close.
This is what we're trying to do, and this is how we're going to solve the problems, we're going to restorative practice, but we're going all-in, not, some of us are going to kind of do that, and other people are doing this, I mean, that's the way, you know, kids get mixed messages, that, you know, everybody's got mixed messages at that point. Then the principals are saying, hey, did you do restorative, oh, you don't do restorative practices.
Do we know how many are signed up from?
She said thirty.
You signed up? Okay.
There's two.
At least three, all right.
And I think, in my conversation with Kathy Butler about this, too, and she's not here, but I can verify this, too, because I think part of this training is meant to be, to almost be a train-the-trainer type training as well. That's why it's so extensive, and so, in order for us to do that, and he's, hopefully, you know, then we can use, implement some kind of teacher leader model, too, where it's not going to cost us, if you figure if it's twenty grand for, I mean, for, to train the whole staff, it's going to be really, really expensive, it's a teacher leader model that they're using for professional development, then you can take them and-
That's what we're doing.
I'll get more, more information.
I just need more, I mean, if we're going down this path, let's go down and say this is the right way, we'll figure out if it's right, or we got to change directions, but we need to start heading somewhere on what we're doing, is all I'm saying. So this is the way, this is the way.
Go onto the website, go onto that website, and it's very enlightening.
When is it scheduled?
Pardon?
When's it scheduled?
I don't have a date.
For the restorative?
Did you say June fourteenth and fifteenth?
It's June fourteenth and fifteenth, and then July eighteen to nineteen.
So you told us that twice, didn't you?
Yeah, she did. In July, what was it?
Eighteen to nineteen.
So if we put it off, that might be a detriment to getting those done, right? Probably wouldn't happen.
Has he signed up?
I have.
Okay.
Nice. So can we go ahead and approve it for now, and then get more-
Oh, I'm fine with it, if we're going on this teacher model, then I'm okay with it.
I'll put that in my update this week, I'll meet with Kathy and look at it.
I'm just saying, if we're going down the restorative, let's do it, I mean, we got to go somewhere.
Let's try it.
All right.
I mean, it just, we need to start figuring stuff out, if this is going to be a training that we need, obviously, we have three people-
From Pat?
That are here that have signed up, at least three, they raised their hand, that they're asking for the training.
And the principal.
And they're coming from one of the elementaries that's been affected.
tougher.
So they're asking for help, they're signing up for the training, we're proposing, so let's, let's give them something, that's my-
All right, Veronica, call the roll.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
No.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carried.
We're going to make a believer out of you, Mr. Weidling, we're, we're going to make a believer out of you.
Three and a half years to do it.
All right.
Never say never.
Item I, NWEA, amount is eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars through ESAR funds. The superintendent recommends approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and NWAEA for MAP diagnostic assessments for grade six through eight, science and high school ELA and MAP. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. I'll second. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item J, McKinley Partial Roof Renovation, this is in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand and sixty-two dollars. This is a capital expenditure. Superintendent recommends approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and Garland DBS Inc. for McKinley Elementary Partial Roof Renovation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
All right, discussion?
And this, this, we did bid this out, several bids, right?
Yeah, this is, well, and Garland does the bidding, so they're the, like, gen GC, and they bid those out, yes.
Yep.
Well, they're part of state bid?
Yes, and they manage the project, and I think at the bottom of that sheet, it tells you the three bidders.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was true, and-
Yep.
Yep, okay.
All right, Veronica, call the roll, please.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item K, Taff Elementary Partial Roof Renovation, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars, capital expenditure. Superintendent recommends approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and Garland DBS Inc. for Taff Elementary Partial Roof Renovations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yeah.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item L, McKinley Elementary Exterior Wall and Sealant Repairs, for two hundred and ten thousand dollars, eight hundred and eighteen, capital expenditure funds. Superintendent recommends approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and Garland DBS Inc. for McKinley Elementary Exterior Wall and Sealant Repairs. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. I'll second. All right, discussion?
This, this was also bid out, yep, okay.
All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried.
That one's a local company, too, right?
Is that JV Roofing?
It's Quality Mason.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a local Marion company, too.
And I think that the JV Roofing, I know that it's from Tiffin, but I think that the manager for that-
I think, I think you're correct.
Yeah.
So at least we're doing some local business.
Yeah, they've done some really good work, too, so.
All right, item M, Food Service Point of Sale Software for forty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. This is a food service budget source, the superintendent recommends the approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and EMS Link for an electronic point-of-sale system for the food service department. Do I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Terri, the motion, Ted, second. Do we have discussion? All right, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. All right, item N, school photography services. There is no fiscal impact. Superintendent recommends approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and Johnston's Picks for school photography of students and staff as presented. Do I have a motion?
Oh, Johnston's, motion. I make the motion.
Terri, second.
All right, discussion.
On this company, is there a reason we don't do, like, Life Touch at a galleon?
Is this the, do you still do Life Touch, but?
No, they, they rebid the, they rebid the photography services.
I see some people smiling. I think we had some issues.
I think there were some issues with Life Touch, so they rebid.
I mean, they're more, I mean, it's right down the road, but.
We've tried.
All right.
Yeah. All right, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item O, YMCA MOU memorandum of understanding for summer school. Superintendent recommends approval of the MOU between Marion City Schools and Marion YMCA for summer camp programming for the summer of 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Go ahead, Scott. Mr. Wibbling made the motion and Terri seconds. Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item P, summer employment of students ages fourteen through sixteen. Superintendent recommends approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and Ohio Means Jobs to allow students aged fourteen to sixteen to work during the summer as positions are filled by Ohio Means Jobs. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And I'll second.
Can I, so we're gonna take care of them getting their work permits and everything for the summer employment? Do we know approximately how many kids will be employed?
Are there, is there a list of them on, I thought, online?
Cause don't they have work permits? Don't they have to have work permits?
They do for fourteen.
I'm pretty sure you get the work permits through Ohio Means Jobs, so they, they, they provide the work permits for them.
So I know that they're still trying to fill some positions, but these are the ones that they had completely done by the board meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, there's some stipulations here about the work permits and those that they, they're still required, but they assist with the job coach and making sure they get them, but they're typically signed by me, so there's.
All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Motion carried. All right, at this time, I need to entertain a motion to go into executive session under item one in accordance with ORC 121.22G1, the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of a public employee or official or the investigative charges or complaints against a public employer, employee, I'm sorry, official licensee or regulated individual.
So moved.
I'll second. Discussion, we don't need discussion, right? And we do it. Call the roll.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
All right, at this point, folks, we're gonna go into executive session. There will be action afterwards because we still have a big chunk of our consent agenda, but it might be a while, so you're free to hang out or go home. I know what I'd do, so, anyway.
Get some water.
All right. Call back to order? Okay. I'm getting there. Consent calendar. All right. Consent calendar approval, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by the board in one motion in the form listed below. There will be no discussion of these items prior to the time board votes on the motion unless members of the board staff or public requests specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent agenda. All right. So do I have a motion?
I think Dr. Iresi, before we commit.
That's true.
I'm gonna ask that the, we pulled Sean Kearns' contract from this
Okay.
agenda item, which because where we're at may would result in Sean returning on a two-year contract because we will take no action on this.
Right, okay. All righty.
I move approval of the consent agenda as modified.
And I will second. All right. Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Motion carried. All right. I think I've got it, okay. Just making sure I'm not missing something. Twelve, thirteen. Okay, we'll go on to board announcements. Our future meetings are listed below on the, whatever this is called, the agenda, I'm sorry. What time is it? Oh, wow. All right, we'll go to committee reports.
This is just something from a previous communications committee, and I had people asking questions as to why it was this room that was selected for, for broadcasting as opposed to the community room. I don't wanna speak for Mr. Mullins, if you want to jump in here to correct me if I need to, but the community room versus the cafeteria, the cafeteria is used for so many different things. And we're trying to help Mr. Mullins provide the service that he's doing, just one location was going to help. So it has nothing to do with trying to keep the numbers low. It is literally so that the cafeteria, the stage can be used, and it just made it easier for the, the person in the department who's really providing the service. So I wanted to quell any rumors that were out there, so that's why.
Yeah, the cafeteria is not the best place for a board meeting.
And it's just, again, it gets used so often for so many different things, so.
And, and we're hoping that in another year, I think, this room will be better designed so that you all can see the agenda better. Cause I know it's, when I stood in the back of the room tonight and I looked forward, it's like, yeah, it's kind of, it's better.
Thank you.
It's better.
Figured out.
Wouldn't it be nice if there were monitors on your wall and another monitor in the back? That would be great. So, yeah, so, anyway, committee reports, number fourteen. Do I have any committee reports? All right.
We do have a few committee meetings this week coming up. We have buildings and grounds on Wednesday, we have diversity on Tuesday, and I believe we have maybe communications? No.
Diversity and equity, I think.
I won't be able to make Tuesday. Can you send me the?
Yep.
Notes, but thank you. Talk about that.
Got you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I help on that curriculum? Were you only, what, two board members?
Because I can go off of that.
You can only add two.
Yeah, but I can, I can, I can be off of the curriculum.
You wanna, yeah, you guys wanna coordinate that, that's fine.
Okay, yep. So I will now be not on curriculum.
If it's three, it's considered a board meeting.
I'm sorry?
I was telling Terri why it's only two instead of three.
Yeah, that's why.
Yeah. It'd be considered a board meeting if it's three.
All right, so we've got that finished. Okay, item fifteen, summer work hours, discussion. A question was raised, Dr. Iresi, do you wanna talk about the summer four-ten's?
Mr. Wibbling had submitted some questions. I think we tried to answer those as best as possible. I know that when I got here, the central office had been on a four-ten work week on Monday through Thursday. I think that as a result of that, and again, previous to my arriving here, it was negotiated into the OC contract that all two hundred and sixty employees would work four-ten's. You guys can probably kind of speak to, I know that there was board discussion about that. I know that there was, you know, the idea that we would turn the air units down on Fridays to save some dollars and those kinds of things, and that that was almost, you know, for, even to attract some of our employees and the, for two hundred and sixty-day employees to be able to work four-ten's is obviously a benefit to them, especially our custodians and secretaries and cooks and all those folks that are here during the summer, so. That's, that's how it all went about. I know we have certified contracts, all those kinds of things, but it's just, you know.
Yeah, that's just for transparency, and again, you know how word travels and it's just, I wanna make sure that everybody's, again, I'm not promoting a time clock necessarily. But if it's switching to four-ten's and in terms of, you know, what the expectations are and we know the job responsibilities and there's a lot of work to do, I just wanna make sure that they're doing it, so.
Well, as, as for me, I don't, I get the response to Mr. Wibbling's questions after I read them was that some union negotiated, but I've read every administrator's contract in the district and they have not negotiated that. They have a two-sixty, so when we say we're gonna do two-sixties, we should have something that says it's not two-sixty, it's whatever, and in the summers, it's, you know, I don't know how many Fridays that's off, but in the summers, it's four-ten's to, I mean, there should be some language in every administrator's contract then that makes it very transparent to the public of what we're doing. Because when we, we're up here voting on two-sixties and, and then they're gonna go to a building and it's not open or something, they're gonna say, well, I thought all these administrators, because we got, you know, we're online, we got in here, we should be doing, I don't know what the number of days that would be off, but we should make sure that that is properly laid out in their contracts and what we expect day-wise.
So are you talking principals, are you talking?
Well, whoever's on the two-sixty.
Not all, all, not all administrators on that two-sixty.
Right, cause don't principals have to go back two weeks early and?
Yeah, they're on, yeah, they're on day contracts and typically, if they're, if they're there that week, they get to work the four-ten's, too. If they're, if they're, they're during that time period from which we work four-ten's, they're allowed to, they're allowed to have that off.
Maybe, cause I, yeah, I see the contract is two-sixty, that means you're gonna be here every day, and when they're not, I mean, we're in violation of our own contract, really. I mean, I guess we could say that, but.
I think we got.
There's nowhere to say that.
Opinion on that as far as being a two hundred and sixty-day pay period, which is, the, the pay is defined, again, that's part of my responsibility is to define that, what that work looks like.
Yeah, I would just like the contract language, at least in those, to clean up, to reflect what we're actually doing.
We can amend that, right?
We can just make their contract, we can add something to their contracts.
I don't know what that would be off and be something less than two-sixty.
What it should do is reflect the class of, how the classified rates, that upon agreement, you would work from the first week in June to the last week in July.
Okay, say the language would be out of the, the union somewhere.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you, thank you for the answered questions, too.
All right, and questions about certified transfers?
I know that rumor was kind of floating around that there were gonna be some transfers throughout the district. We do have and are required to submit what's called an equity plan, and that was passed in 2015. That's due to legislation, so you have to look at your ratio, and primarily for us, it's not so much, it's, it's really for us about access to experienced teachers. And so we have to look at the number of years, the average number of years of teaching, the teaching staff within each building. Obviously, you know, there, we, we monitor that, we've been fairly close. It doesn't have to be an exact number, but we have to determine what that is. So if we have a disparity, like, the average number of teachers in one building is, you know, twenty, or seventeen or eighteen years, and the average years of teaching is seven in another building, what we've said was, when we have the ability to do that, we may take a look at transferring folks. Now, we have assignments that we have to give by June first, and any then change in that assignment would have to be done through the involuntary transfer procedure, which that person then has a right to sit down with, with myself and the union representation to talk about what, you know, what, what all that entails. So the tough thing for us in this district is, it's really hard to make some of those decisions before July tenth, you know, and you guys that have been here for, we have to, you know, we, we have to have special board meetings because we gotta get jobs posted and we have to get people's resignations, you know, taken forth in order for them to meet those deadlines. But, I mean, I don't see it affecting a lot of folks. I don't know that it'll even happen this year, but I know that was part of the conversation and I know the way it was presented is that we were just gonna start swapping people in from building to building, and that's not the case, so.
But you started this off by saying you wanna take care of all rumors.
Right.
And you finished by saying, we won't know till July, so that's still a distinct possibility for teachers.
It, 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 it is every year, and it, I don't know why it's, it's magnified this year because our equity plan has been, we have to submit that every year. Now, COVID, over the last couple of years, I think they relaxed some of those policies, and that was one of them over the years. But previous to that, you are required to submit that equity plan.
So have we submitted it already or is that something we're about to do?
We don't submit it until the August, I think it's through August.
So the reality is, you are looking into moving teachers. That is a distinct possibility.
Yeah, we're required to, yes.
That's the required by O D P.
Yes.
What about the high-quality part? You mentioned the experience part, so the high quality, what determines the high quality?
That's the old, they, they don't, there is no high quality.
That's what I was wanting, yeah.
HQT went away because of the change in licensure, but that, so that law is still there for. If you, if you didn't have a licensed teacher in certain areas, the students would have act, that's part of the equity plan.
But then you say, an involuntary transfer, they can meet with you and the union rep, so if they don't wanna be involuntarily transferred, they can say no?
No. No, according to the contract language, that's, that's, again, nobody, nobody wants to disrupt everybody's, but.
So.
It, it's, it's gotta be understood that we're required to do that, that it's not a, a case where, you know, we wanna swap people out. And again, that, a lot of it's gonna depend on staffing levels.
Right.
But a lot of schools have built community, you know, and they've built community, and I know it's gonna be hard, but.
Well, I will, I will keep, I will keep you posted on those numbers and where that goes as far as, so that you know, you know, where, when it, when it is a possibility, I will make sure that the board is aware of that and obviously, the staff will be aware of that as well.
Thank you.
So the, in essence, the rumor that teachers may be moved is valid and?
I felt like the rumor was that we are doing that, like, it's, it's already a plan in place to do that. That's the rumor I got that was presented to me by MEA. I think that was part of what that conversation was. When did we talk about that?
That was your assumption in the meeting, that's not what I said. I mean, I just wanna be honest with you, I mean.
Well, that's why I looked at you to see.
I thought it was a rumor.
It was a while ago.
You said it wasn't a rumor, so like, I just wanna be clear on, you know, we can hash things out, but it was the rumor that it would happen just at all.
But I guess it's, the rumor was they are being moved and he's saying he doesn't know yet. I mean, that's the gist of where we're at.
I'm not sure what the exact question that you asked me was, but it pertained to moving teachers, experienced teachers into other buildings, correct?
Yes.